Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:02 PM. It is Tuesday, March the first. I'm going to call a special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call a roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Kale? Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Next up, public hearings. Agenda item number one, public hearing on the creation of Public Improvement District pursuant to Chapter 372 Local Government Code to accept public comments on the petition to create the Public Improvement District filed by Blanca River Ranch Properties. This is Ms. Sun's item, but it is just for public hearings. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing. It's now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exceptions contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney. Pursuant to Section 55.071, possible purchase, exchange, lease or value real estate pursuant to Section 55.072. Personal matters pursuant to Section 551.074, city manager's contract. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer or economic incentives to one or more businesses, prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, and now we'll call the regular meeting to order. I'm going to let the tapes roll over for 20 seconds. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, March the first, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call a roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias? Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have several folks who are already registered to speak. First up, Connie Lingus. All right. Next up, Otto Astripper. All right, next up, Cle Torres. Nice. All right, well done. Next up, Mike Roch. Cynthia Bentley, please come save me. Going to put me on the news, is that what that is? That's pretty good. Yeah, 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 thank you. Save me, Cynthia. You never know what you're going to find yourself in, so.
Good evening, everyone, to our prestigious council and our mayor.
All right, order, please. Thank you, Ms. Bentley.
And all who's in present here today. My name is Cynthia Bentley. I am the founder and CEO of Unforgettable Families and Friends, which is a 501(c)(3) here in Kyle, Texas. And I'm also the president of the Kyle Beautiful Kiwanis Club. In order to celebrate Black History Month, we had an event over at the Crude Center on February the 12th. It was from 9:30 AM until 12:00 noon. We invited children from all over the area, from all of the schools and our neighboring counties to come and experience Black History in Kyle, Texas. The children came in, and as they came in, they were greeted. It was a cold day. That was the day they decided to sleep, but the children came out anyway. So we had hot cocoa and cookies for the children. And each child that came also received something very special. Not only were they able to receive books, brand new books free, and they could get as many books as they wanted. They were books from all genres, African-American, Hispanic, you know, the regular books that, you know, you would find in the department store or in the bookstore. And we gave them a pouch just like this to commemorate the event. In it, it says, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And that's by Maya Angelou, 1928 to 2014. So each child got a pouch like this. With me today, we have a couple of our Kiwanis. We have Ren Johnson and our brand new member, Susan Rena. And Susan was a result of the event. She came to volunteer, and she liked us so much, she decided to be a Kiwanian. So we want to thank you for that. So what we have today is something special for each one of the council members. And it's commemorating, celebrating Black History Month in the city of Kyle, Texas, Children's Free Book Giveaway, February the 12th, 2022, 9:30 AM to 12:00 noon. Crude Activity Center, 101 Burleson Street, Kyle, Texas. And it is numbered, it's a limited edition. We only have 25 of it. And it's from the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta and also unforgettable families and friends. And on it is a commemorative quarter from Maya Angelou. And we plan on doing this each time. In September, we're going to celebrate Hispanic American Month, and we'll do something similar to this. Okay, so I have a certificate for every one of our members on council, including Mr. Scott Sellers, Mariana, is she here today?
She's in the room.
Mariana. We have one for Samantha. I didn't tell you. And you all can just come forward and get your plaques. We have one for Chief Barnett. Okay, I didn't see you walking. Come on, Chief.
All right, don't really do this, but we can, we'll do it this time. I'll carry the.
At the event, we had a special table, and it was depicting the Black History makers here in Kyle, Texas. We had a special table with pictures and information on Dex Ellison, our councilman, District One. We had our mayor that served three terms, Mr. James Atkins. And we had pictures and information on Mr. Ray Bryant, who's one of our council members. And of course, and I don't want to mispronounce her name, we did have a female councilperson, and that was, it is Bartwood. Okay, yes. So we had a special table depicting them to let them know that African-Americans here are giving back to our community. Okay, y'all want to come close? Anybody else? Nobody to the fire department tonight? All right, we can get those back. All right, we're going to get a little bit tighter if we can. Okay, we're just going to go panoramic. Here we go. On three, say still. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Wow, that was impressive. I really feel like we should be giving you all something. I don't know where the Kiwanis went. From the service, you all come up here every year, the service that you all do in many different facets throughout our community. It truly takes individuals and groups of people coming together like that to do really impactful and great things. And so I almost wish we were presenting you all with something. But thank you all for this very special gift and for your continued service in our community. And certainly, we enjoy partnering with you all, and anytime we can help, certainly, you all have been quite acquainted with our staff and various many different projects over the years. And so I'm just so thrilled that you all continue to do great work for our community. So thank you.
Okay, that's all the citizen comments that I have filled out, or forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, agenda item number one, presentation Women's History Month Proclamation. Councilmember Ellison.
All right. If there's no objection from council, and we got the memo last meeting, move these presentations. So we're going to do a joint presentation of the proclamations, councilmember Flores-Kale and myself. I'll let her certainly introduce hers. But March is Women's History Month, and so it is my honor to write a proclamation. This is the first time I've written one for Women's History Month, so it is certainly a great honor, and I'd like to read that here. City of Kyle, City Council Proclamation. Whereas the city of Kyle encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good and highlight the many threads in our fabric that make it strong and whole. And whereas, Women's History Month has its origins as a national celebration in 1981, when Congress authorized and requested the president to proclaim the week beginning March 7, 1982, as Women's History Week. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress designated the month of March, 1987, as Women's History Month. Presidents have issued annual proclamations every year since, celebrating the contributions and specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of disciplines and fields. And whereas, the city of Kyle has a rich history of many dynamic and great leaders, community servants, entrepreneurs, and business professionals, educators, and more that have made their influence felt and constructed the path for the city we are today. This includes Mary Lucy Kyle Hartson, the daughter of city founder Fergus Kyle, who at the age of 72, was elected mayor of Kyle by a write-in vote in 1937. The great-grandmother served for most of 1937 until 1946, and along with the all-women city council elected in 1944. And whereas, the National Women's History Alliance designates a yearly theme for Women's History Month, and this year's theme is Women Providing Healing Promoting Hope. This theme is both a, quote, "tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic," and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. And therefore be proclaimed by the city of Kyle that the month of March, 2022, should be celebrated as Women's History Month, in appreciation of the many contributions and achievements by women of Kyle's community, as well joining in commemorating and encouraging the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history. Signed and entered this first day of March. Councilmember Flores-Kale?
Thank you, and thank you to councilmember Ellison, who reached out to me to ask if we could do it combined, which I thought was a really great idea. So mine is International Women's Day. The campaign theme this year is Break the Bias. On their website, they speak of the idea of imagining a gender equal world, a world free of bias, stereotypes, and discrimination, a world that is diverse, equitable, and inclusive, a world where difference is valued and celebrated. Together, we can forge women's equality. Collectively, we can all hashtag Break the Bias. So I'm going to thank our HR personnel. She reached out to me and asked me if I could read this for her, and I'm going to admit the first time I read it, I was not expecting to be as emotional as I was, but it got to a point where I was like, really impressed. Like, I mean, as women, we don't really realize the struggles that we go through and the things that we overcome just to do simple things like have a kid and go to work. But, and we don't even think about that without a second thought, so. Whereas, International Women's Day is celebrated globally on March 8 by those who believe in gender equality and who seek to improve the lives of all women through cultural, legal, economic, and social change. And whereas, International Women's Day celebrates the collective power of women, pays tribute to their achievements, and recognizes the remaining challenges to further efforts for women's rights and gender equality, encouraging and mobilizing all people to contribute for positive change. And whereas, the city of Kyle honors the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our country, including those whose contributions have not been adequately recognized and celebrated. And whereas, the city of Kyle pays tribute to all the trailblazers from the recent and distant past for daring to envision a future for which not past precedent existed, and for building a nation of endless possibilities for all its women. And whereas, Kamala Harris is currently serving as the 49th Vice President, the first and highest-ranking female official in U.S. history. And whereas, currently, there are women serving locally in leadership positions inspiring the continued work in advancing the rights, opportunities, and full participation of women and girls of all backgrounds. And whereas, on the 100th and 11th International Women's Day, we celebrate and encourage everyone to take actions against gender bias and inequity in support of the 2022 theme of Break the Bias. And whereas, while International Women's Day activity escalates from March 8, prime employers for women maintain a deep and continuous focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion all year round. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Kyle that March 8, 2022, should be celebrated, International Women's Day, in appreciation of the many achievements of the women of Kyle and those across this nation and the world. Go, girls.
And so, as my colleague, councilmember Flores-Kale, mentioned, be a part of the movement. There is a hashtag, #breakthebias. And for International Women's Day, there is a sign that you do. It's right and then left. That is the Break the Bias sign that is for the campaign this year. And so we certainly invite anyone that is in support of these proclamations to come forward, and we'd like to take a picture, recognizing this as well. Thank you.
Okay, you done panoramic?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you doing the dancing? Okay. I'm going to have to get a little bit closer. I can do the panoramic. So there's no run-in from there to here after?
All right, next up is agenda item number three. It's a proclamation regarding the council for the Indigenous and Teahano community. Mayor Protim, I think you wanted to bring this back next time?
Next meeting, please.
Okay, so no objection, we're going to postpone this one. All right, next up is agenda item number four, presentation of the Kyle Police Department's 2021 Annual Racial Profiling Report. Chief Barnett?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. We're here tonight to present the 2021 Kyle Police Department Racial Profiling Report, which is required by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. This report is required to be submitted to the governing body owner before March the first of each year. And I've included in the last two council meetings, or the last one in this one, some documents for your review. You should have the Kyle Police Department Racial Profiling Policy, Chapter 2.2, the Kyle Police Department Annual Report with 2021 data, a memorandum from Captain Hernandez regarding a complaint review, and a memorandum from Sergeant Gooding regarding the data analysis. As you may recall, the state of Texas enacted a law requiring certain actions on behalf of the local agency, the police department, and the individual law enforcement officers themselves when conducting traffic or pedestrian stops. The Kyle Police Department has a policy that clearly defines racial profiling and prohibits officers from engaging in racial profiling as defined by state law. And our officers are also directed to capture certain types of data pertaining to traffic and pedestrian detentions with members of the public. The Kyle Police Department police vehicles that routinely engage in traffic and pedestrian stops are outfitted with audio and video recording equipment. These videos are retained for a period of not less than 90 days required by state law, and they are reviewed throughout the year by supervisory staff as required by the statute. The Kyle Police Department does have a publicly promoted process by which an individual may file a complaint if the individual believes that a Kyle police officer has engaged in racial profiling. Information on that process can be obtained from a variety of sources, to include the city's website, the front lobby of the police department, and from Kyle Police Department staff. In addition, every person that receives a written citation is provided information on how to file a complaint. Furthermore, the Kyle Police Department did not receive any complaints pertaining to racial profiling during this reporting period. Please see the memorandum associated from, or provided from Captain Hernandez. In reviewing the data from the Kyle Police Department, we conducted a total of 8,635 motor vehicle and pedestrian stops in 2021. The following represents the percentages of individuals stopped by race and ethnicity as categorized and defined by the state of Texas. Race and ethnicity, the percents were: black, 11.2%, Asian Pacific Islander, 1.41%, Caucasian, 38.34%, Hispanic Latino, 48.47%, Alaska Native and American Indian, .58%, with a total rounding to 100%. Of those, 35% of the stops were female, 65% of the stops were male. An analysis, which is required by state law, was conducted by both Sergeant Gooding and data provided from Lieutenant Griffith. They reviewed the evidence, or they reviewed the data and reported that no evidence of racial profiling was observed. Their findings were also provided to you in the backup material. Of the 8,635 stops that resulted in an arrest, citation, or written or verbal warning, 639 vehicle searches were conducted. Of those 639 searches, 104 were consensual, while 413 of them were based upon probable cause, and 21 were incident to arrest. 33 of the searches were due to contraband that was found in plain view of the officer, and 58 were policy-required inventory searches. Of the same 639 searches, 457 of those led to contraband being located and identified in the following categories. Alcohol was found 88 times, currency, two, drugs, 362, another category is 42, stolen property, zero, and weapons, nine. Please note that only one category can be selected per stop. The system does not allow you to keep up with more than one item if you find different categories. It picks one category. Of those same 8,635 traffic stops, only in 67 of those stops, which is less than 1% of the instances, was the race and ethnicity, or ethnicity, of the vehicle operator known to the police officer prior to the stop. The results of the 8,635 traffic vehicle stops were as follows. These are the results. Arrest was 262, a citation was 2,306, citation and arrest, 58 of the times, verbal warning, 4,931, written warning, 1,075 times, and a written warning with an arrest was three. Of those 262 arrests, the reason for the arrest was based on the following: outstanding warrant, 84, violation of penal code, 210, and violation of traffic law, 29 times. Of the same 67 instances where the race and ethnicity was known prior to the stop, 41 were male, 26 were female, 32 were white, 29 were Hispanic, four were black, and two were Asian. Of the four that were black, zero were arrested, three were issued a warning, and one was issued a citation. Of the two that were Asian, both were issued written warnings. Of the 29 that were Hispanic, four were arrested, 10 issued citations, 15 issued warnings. Of the 67 instances where race, ethnicity was known, a search was conducted in nine of those instances. Of those nine, none were black, six were Hispanic, and three were white. Of the remaining 58 instances where no search was conducted, two were Asian, four were black, 29 were white, and 23 were Hispanic. Officers who both work and regularly respond to calls for service on areas and all roadways within our city. This includes city streets, county roads, state highways, U.S. highways, and private properties such as parking lots and commonly used but privately maintained roadways. Of those 8,635 stops, the stops were indicated in the following categories: 3,262 were on U.S. highways, 1,276 were on state highways, private property or other was 41, county roadways was 199, and city streets was 3,857. The racial profiling report was filed with the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement as I can certainly dive into more numbers if you would like, but I'll leave you with that summary and be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Councilmember Tobias?
Looking at the one slide, the word states, was physical force resulted in any bodily injury during the traffic stop? It says only one out of 8,634 stops.
Yes, sir.
Only one, and that was suspect. And then I also look at, let's see, go back here. See the memo where the complaint, it says during 2021 calendar year, Kyle Police Officers conducted 8,635 traffic stops. Out of the verification, only 17 complaints were filed with the department. None of them, I see here, were racially profiling by the officers.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Councilmember Flores-Kale?
Thank you, and thank you for your report. My only question is going to be on page three of nine. The question is, was race or ethnicity known prior to stop?
Yes.
So how do you guys figure that out?
So the officers indicate that on the, what we call the stop data, which could be a pedestrian stop or a traffic stop. The ticket riders that we use, they capture all this data, so it's input by the officer. So it is a question that's mandatory before they can clear that call, and they have to indicate whether they knew the race or ethnicity of the person that was driving the vehicle prior to the stop. I'd like to add that sometimes it is true. We absolutely know the driver, if it's a male or female, our best guess, we have an idea if they're black, white, Asian, or whatnot. We have an idea if they're black, white, Asian, or whatnot. That can come from a variety of reasons. Number one, it's direct observation. The officer can see the person and then turn around on the car for the violation. That also comes from calls for service. These traffic stops will include times when our officers are actually called to stop that car if they have the right probable cause or reason to stop it. For example, if you're a shoplifter and you leave a local convenience store, and we didn't understand what vehicle you were in when you're leaving the scene, and then we see you on the roadway a few blocks away, we're going to stop you. We're going to record that data in here. We may have been told upfront that it was a white male, white female, black male, black female, or whatnot. So, but in those instances, that's the count, and it does come from the officers.
Can I ask you one more question? It looks like, can you tell me the difference between the state highway and the US highway?
That's the second time I've had that in the last few years, absolutely.
I was looking at it, and I was like, how would they know?
Yes, ma'am. So your state, they're identified, first of all, to us, so police officers, we keep up with that. Your US highway systems, a great example of that would be I-35 running right through our city. United States, they're part of the United States Transportation System, cross-country, international, I mean, interstate and interstate highway system. Your state maintained roadways otherwise are maintained by TechDOT, and they're intrastate-only roadways.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Mayor Protim?
Yeah, Chief, I just want to thank you for the report. I always look forward to it every year. Definitely gives council the information needed when we're looking at how our departments are operating. So this is a great report. Thank you, very detailed. Appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it very much. Next up, agenda item number five, update on various capital improvement projects, City Manager's Report.
All right, Mayor and Council, good evening. Tonight, on the City Manager's Report, we have first our Communications Director Samantha Armbruster.
Many have already seen the news, but we have launched our Pirate Treasure Hunt that kicked off today through March 20th, and people are already finding the treasure boxes. So you can find more information at cityofkyle.com/piehunt, but basically, we have hidden treasure boxes through our parks and trails. If you find one, you take a picture, send it in, you're entered in to win $314. Why? Because National Pie Day is coming up on March 14th. I have to also say, it's very soothing that the very first person that found a treasure box today was a guy named Kyle. Next is our community survey. We launched this at the last city council meeting, and so I'm just going to keep putting the word out that we would love everyone's feedback on our city services. And I have a thermometer here. To reach our goal, we are, as of today, at 340, so it's tracking well, but we really want to hit that line there at the top.
Thank you, Samantha. Just to boost our numbers, I sent it to all members of my family. Doubled the response rate. Next, we have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mariana Espinoza. Or we don't.
Let's skip to the next one.
Yeah, go ahead and skip to the next one.
All right, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director. Summer camp registration is now open online. Early bird registration only requires a $20 registration fee for those interested in camp runs for eight weeks this year, starting on June 6. This Friday, we have family skate night at the Ash Pavilion. Pre-registration is required because you have to sign a waiver to skate, and there is a small fee for residents and non-residents. There'll be music and just skating for family fun. And then next week, we have the Plant a Flower, Paint a Pot event at Lake Kyle. We currently are fall at 107 registrations, but there is a waiting list online if anyone is still interested, if anyone decides to not come. Let's hope you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana. Next, we have our MS4 Coordinator, Ms. Kathy Raker.
Mayor Protim, councilmembers, Kathy Raker, for the record. This weekend, Great Texas River Cleanup, we're meeting at Waterleaf. The event starts at 8:30, and pizza will be served at 11:30. And my last check, we actually had 96 slots of 100 filled. So it looks like it's gonna be a good event. The weather's supposed to be great, so come out, pick up some trash.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we, just a reminder that our typically scheduled city council meeting on the 15th has been moved to March 22nd because of the spring break holiday. And then finally, we have our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Sandra Dure.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm honored to announce that we had several promotions this month, and all these team members went through a competitive selection process. And because of their great performance and following the core values of City of Kyle, they've been promoted as the following: Michael Kaufman Lynch, he's now our librarian; Sheba Aliwisa, she's our recreation programmer; Mary Von Folsom, library assistant; and Louis Alvarez, our Public Works Inspector. So congratulations to each of them. And to welcome to Team Kyle, our new employees are Zoe Reyna, she's now the Circulation Desk Clerk; Kayla Sharp is our new City Planner; Ashmina Dahl is our new Water/Wastewater Modeling Analyst for the Engineering Department; Bobby Waltman, Street Technician 2 for Public Works; and Randy Baer, Police Recruit. So please welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next up. Leon, why don't you just actually hang tight for just a second? We're gonna, if there's no objections, I'm gonna move agenda item number 29 up to this spot. There's some presenters associated with that item. We're gonna have them come forward and present. So I'm gonna bring up agenda item number 29, Discussion of Possible Action, or Direction to Support Request from HAYCISD Diversity Advisory Council for City Support with Broadcasting Promotions in Space to Conduct the Community Book and Discussion Event, sponsored by Councilman Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and have the presenters from HAYCISD DAC come up. So I won't go into much of detail. They have a great presentation ready for us. I know we have the PowerPoint and the YouTube video queued up, ready to go, I believe, for Grant, so take it away.
Thank you, Kyle City Council. My name is Peyton Perez. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Carpenter Hill Elementary, and I'm the chairperson of the Diversity Advisory Council.
I'm Danielle Yella. I'm the vice-chairperson of the Diversity Advisory Council, and I'm also a teacher at Hayes High School.
And I'm Grace Gassaneda. I teach third grade, Migley Elementary, and Diversity Advisory Council Parliamentary.
So we prepared a presentation for you that I think was already sent out to you. I'm not sure, is it gonna be displayed right here?
Yeah, the PowerPoint?
Yes, please.
Yes. And this is the PowerPoint that all of council received ahead of time as well.
So I'll go ahead and get started while that's being pulled up. We're here to ask for a hopeful partnership with the City of Kyle in putting on a community event. We are hopeful to sponsor an event called One Community, One Book, which is kind of a twist on your typical one district, one book event in which everyone reads the same book and discusses as a way to bring individuals together. We decided to take the approach of a one-community-one event viewpoint rather than one district, one book, because we really did want to engage the whole community, and we realized that we're stronger when we work together, especially when promoting literacy for the students that live within Hayes County. So we just thought that a partnership with the City of Kyle would be really, really great. So some of the things that we would love to partner with you on are using your public space. We had met with Councilmember Ellison the other day just to kind of discuss some options, and we really loved the idea of using the Train Depot space, interior and exterior, as a space in which individuals could gather together in groups to discuss the book Seafoals by Paul Fleishman on the presentation that was sent out to you. And this book itself is also an event about bringing community together, community members from all walks of life, and just really supporting and uplifting one another. Oh, there it is. And so our council actually voted on this book. We decided that it would be a great way to bring the community together. We feel like, especially during this time of COVID and all the events that have transpired within our nation within the last few years, we haven't always done as great of a job just talking with one another as fellow humans and fellow community members, and thought that this would be a really great way to engage our community and wanted to also kind of give autonomy to some students to participate. So this year, we are looking to open it up to eighth graders and above in terms of our student population, and then any community members, parents, faculty members of HAYCISD who would also want to participate. In the future, we were hoping to open it up to all grade levels and maybe picking a novel or picking a text that comes as a novel for our secondary students, but also as a picture book for our elementary students so that we really are all kind of discussing the same message within the same text. And then here's our mission up here, in case you have never heard of the Diversity Advisory Council, but we are a broad and diverse council, and our sole job is to support and advise a superintendent on the coordination and development of policies, program, resources, and methods with the purpose of increasing maximum achievement for all students and staff in an ethnically diverse, multicultural, and gender-equitable environment that is safe for all stakeholders of the HAYCISD community. So I don't have access to the presentation here to move along the slides, but... Okay. These are kind of the community event purposes: bringing community members together, sparking conversations, promoting literacy, and also creating awareness of the DAC for people who don't know who we are and what our purpose is so that we can hopefully partner with other organizations within the community to uplift our entire community and our entire population. So included in this slide is a statement of support for our superintendent, a letter of support from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Wright, a sponsor of our council. And then in terms of partnership engagement, what we would really be looking for is help with publicity, help broadcasting the event, creating an awareness of what's going on. Hopefully, we would be able to work with Councilmember Ellison with some of our moderation for the event, modeling some aspects of it off of the Dialogue for Peace and Progress. And I think you can skip to the next slide. I think I covered some of this already. Well, just actually, if we could move to the student video, that would be wonderful. That's the video link that was on YouTube. We wanted to include some student perspectives as well, so in the video, you'll see two of our DAC student representatives, out of a little less than a dozen of them, who wanted to just talk to you a little bit about the event.
Hello, my name is Joseph. I am the idol show representative, and I like being on the HAYCISD Diversity Council because I like being able to give positive feedback and advise the district to make changes for policies and like give positive feedback to them and negative feedback where it's needed. And I'm excited for this One Community, One Book event because it can bring in different people from different walks of life and different backgrounds to one place to talk about like one specific thing and even like get to know each other, branch out, and talk about different, like, topics and that sort of thing. So come to it. It is a very good event. It will bring, hopefully, bring the community together, and see you there.
Hi, I'm Audrey. I go to Hayes High School, and I am part of the Diversity Advisory Council. So I joined the council to be able to bring a voice to all the students and peers who aren't brave enough to bring up their own conflicts with diversity and inclusion. So with my big personality and strong-mindedness, I'm able to kind of just bring a voice and be an outlet for students across my campus. I feel as though this One Book, One Community event is a great opportunity for not only my peers, but for the whole community, parents and teachers and students alike to come together and read this one book and be able to share thoughts on diversity and inclusion, which is a big thing right now in our world as we're kind of expanding and being more inclusive. It's a great opportunity for our districts to follow in the same tracks and bring together our whole community in the hopes of increasing our diversity and inclusion.
All right, that pretty much sums it up. So at this point, if anyone has any questions, we're happy to take questions or receive emails later on after reflection as well.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So I've just kind of, I think the ask here is they have a date selected for April 9th, 3:25.
Yes, sir.
I think they were hoping to get access to the city hall chambers in order to broadcast that event, as well as have people here in attendance for that. Using our promotion and ability to broadcast the event, similar to the Dialogue for Peace and Progress, I know they also were looking at utilizing the Train Depot as well. So I think they're hoping to get the blessing of the council and the city as a whole to partner in this event.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? Mayor Protim?
Yeah, Jerry or James, oh, Councilback. Do we have to get permission from the Train Depot Board in order to do that, or is that something we can do as a city? You take care of it. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. So Jerry will set that up for us.
And have we looked to confirm that the chambers are available that time? Is it on a Wednesday?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday, 3 to 5?
Yep.
Okay, and do we have staff that, I guess we'd have to bring staff in to do the recording and all the broadcasting for that as well? So there might be a communications question for Samantha. Good, we're good. Okay, wow. Any other comments? Councilmember Floris Kip?
Thank you for coming and thank you for speaking. I think it would be really great to see you guys sit behind here and kind of experience the whole process. So my vote would be for not the Train Depot, because I think this would be a little bit more fun, and it's just... Oh, it's both.
Just like the Dialogues, but they're gonna have some, spread people out and utilize both venues.
One concern was still interior spaces for people who are still a little reserved and just with the pandemic. And so we were really cognizant about choosing a location that would allow us to have indoor groups as well as outdoor groups, because we didn't want that fear to limit someone from attending if it's something that they were interested in.
How would we do recordings outside? How do you put, I'm not communication, I don't know, but how would we put it all together?
You're totally fine. So we were actually thinking about having two components of the event. So either starting with panelist discussions in here and then moving outdoor to the discussions, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear, or hosting our discussions first and then moving in for panelist discussions for whomever wanted to stay. And we just thought that people bringing their whole family, children, maybe might not want to stay for the panelist discussions, but other people who are more engaged in the conversation and wanted to keep it rolling, maybe could. So that was kind of our thought process there.
I love it. I love it, and I'm hoping the city will do more in connection with the schools, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to work together. And just let me know when, because I want to be there.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
You're all invited. You're all invited.
Councilor Tobias?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Ellison, for bringing this forward. It's a great idea, and thank you for doing what you're doing. I think this is conversations we've had on council about planting seeds for our community, and this is a great way to start them young, to get involved, and to be supportive from a city level for our schools and our school district. And I really support this right here. And by all means, thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm sure the rest of council is looking forward to working with you on this great project.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I was just gonna say, I remember when Dr. Wright brought forward the Diversity Advisory Council two years ago in the context in which it was brought forward. I remember thinking, you know, having a lot of interest to see what would become of the group, and here we are. It's obvious that there's been a lot of work to get to this point, and so it's not about jumping right out and trying to do things, but so much as building, you know, a real platform for something long-term. It's clear you're doing that. So I'm pretty honored that the city... pretty honored that the city gets to participate in these efforts. So I'm very happy to support as well. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to provide support to the district advisory council as has been outlined.
Second?
Moved by Mayor, seconded by Councilor Tobias is there a discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Peyton. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, agenda item number six, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda. Presentation, Mr. Leon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Leon Barbas, City Engineer. Not seeing anything on the screen here. There you go. Thank you. First project is Heroes Memorial Park. Council and Mayor would like to let you know that the last two weeks have been very tough on our contractors. The weather has really slowed them down. So you're not going to see a lot of changes in some of these numbers. Heroes Memorial Park, we're at 56% complete. We're still working on the Memorial Honor Wall, installing the bridge structure, and they have poured some additional sidewalk along with the perimeter. I added this last bullet in to kind of give you an idea on when we're expecting to see this project completed. So that's the current date that we have today on July. Lederde Park, we're about 44% complete. They're working on the footings for the pavilion and they're starting work on the amphitheater. And we're expecting to complete this project in June. Mary Calharts and Park Project is pretty well completed. According to the contractor, this week they'll be working on the baskets and hanging those baskets up. They'll be finishing the electrical lighting and finishing some other landscape, non-landscaping work in the southwest corner. And they'll be removing that temporary fencing. As spring comes through, we'll be doing the rest of the planting. So you probably won't see this slide again since we're pretty well completed with this project. South Side Wastewater Improvements, we're about 96% complete. We're almost right there at Edwards Drive, getting ready to cross that intersection. And then they'll be planning to work on the Edwards Drive wastewater line behind those buildings there. Treatment Plant Expansion, we're about 86% complete on the plant itself. The de-watering facility, 7% complete. They continue to work on Saturdays and on Sundays as needed. And the blowers that we talked about before that were in the Netherlands, they are now in Houston undergoing factory testing. So we're expecting those in mid-March. So they're here in Texas at least. We did slip a little bit on schedule, but we're expecting to open the plant and have it ready in April of 2022. The de-watering facility will be completed later in August of 2022. Those are some of the work that they've been working on. Wanted to update you on our wastewater permit discharge that we're applying with TCQ on. We're applying for that permit so we can expand the discharge permit that we have today. We're at four and a half right now. We're trying to go to nine and hopefully 12 million gallons per day on that plant. We should have had that ready to go to TCQ March the 7th. And we have completed our stakeholder presentations and we're sending out notification letters to the adjacent property owners. And we'll be doing that this Friday. Just to let you know, there is a public open house scheduled for April 14th at 6:30 PM in the Public Works Administration Building. Bunton Creek Interceptor, we're about 87%, I'm sorry, 87% complete. There was no major work done last week, obviously because of the weather, but sometimes you wonder about a project. But what happened, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, we got notice that one of the contractor's crews that was working on the project walked off the job. Apparently, they got better pay wherever else they went. So the contractor's scrambling to try to get this project back on track. From what I understand, he has seven crews, had seven crews, he's down to three, but he's understanding that this project's important. So he's supposed to start work this week, later this week. So weather, COVID, labor forces are hard to keep in track today. Opus Road, county's processing their third lift of base this week. They are going to be laying some concrete pipe later on this week. LA Branch Interceptor, we're about 52% complete. We're installing water lines, wastewater lines, and reclaimed water lines between Scott Street and Sledge Street. And we're also doing some work around Old Highway 81 and along the southbound frontage road there. Roland Lane, this was supposed to have been finished last week. Again, the weather slowed them down. Talked to the developer yesterday and he says he's going to be pushing them to complete that road and have it open this week. Let me go over the consent agenda items for you. Task order number 11, this is a contract that we've wanted to award to LJA to design the Center Street and the South Street Quiet Zones. Number eight is for updating our city's water model. Recently, council just approved the wastewater model update. This is for updating our water model. And that's with contracts with Burgess and Iple. Task order number, number nine is task order number two. This is a water leaf wastewater line that we need to place a new line in. It takes it from the Cool Springs, they're at 150, all the way to the plant. Number 11 is task order number five. That's for intersection study on Coles for two intersections. One of them is at Marketplace and the other one is at Kyle Crossing. As per ordinance, they are required to look at the possibility of installing a roundabout there. And if it's just not going to work, then they'll look at the traditional traffic signal. Number 12 is task order number six. That's another intersection study that we're going to be doing at Dacey Lane and Downing Way, just look at the possibility of installing a roundabout there. We also have a little bit of a conflict with Fountain Grove Drive because it's a little bit skewed off that road. So they'll be looking at that intersection also and trying to combine the two, make a safe intersection there. Any questions?
Thank you, Leon. Anybody have any questions? Mayor Protet?
Yeah, Leon, Roland Lane, I think I missed it. Did you have an update on it? I think I missed it.
Yes, Councilmember, that was supposed to have been finished this past week and the weather slowed them down. So I did visit with the contractor, several emails and calls, but he said they have to wrap it up this week. That's what he's going to push his contractor to do.
Okay.
And in the meantime, people have been removing barricades and going through there the wrong way. But so we've asked the contractor to keep track of that and keep that from happening so we can hurry and wrap it up.
Yeah, I know they're getting pretty frustrated over there.
Yes, they are.
I'm getting the calls, so definitely. Did we look at the coverts that were in that area or the concrete?
I did, Councilmember. I did go by. There's some leftover concrete there and I saw what you were talking about. But those curbs are tapered, so they'll be fine.
So they tapered them? Because they weren't tapered when I was out there.
There's one section of curb that's sitting there that looks like it's part of it, but it's not. It's just a piece that was laid there.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
Just real quick, Scott, I know it's not on there. I just wanted to give a quick report on the Public Safety Center. Is that okay?
It'd be great.
Because it's not on the agenda. Can you do it?
Yeah, you can under the current heading.
Under the current heading, I can. Okay, I just wanted to say that we're three, sorry about that, 324, 23 days away. Concrete's still being poured. We have some red iron going on up as well. And a lot of the underground utilities are done as well. So it's great. Just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to get the Public Safety Center in the slides ongoing with the other two parts.
I can do that, yes.
So that we can keep monitoring that as well. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any of these items that they would like to pull? Councilor Floriscale?
Thank you. I'd like to pull number seven, number 11, and number 12, please.
Councilor Tobias?
Just number 12 as well.
And, all right, and number eight. All right.
Mayor.
Hell, I tried. Councilmember Ellison?
Motion to approve agenda items nine and 10, I believe, the ones that weren't pulled?
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilwoman Floriscale that we approve agenda items number nine and 10. Is there a discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up, agenda item number seven, approved task order number 11 to LJA Engineering in the amount not to exceed $44,945 for development plans, specifications, and estimates for the Center Street and South Street Quiet Zones. Councilor Floriscale?
Thank you. So I just, this is going to be really quick and after this, I'll motion to approve. But who drafted the exhibits?
That's one of our project managers.
Okay. Can I ask that for future documents that we don't use defined terms without defining them first? So what that means is City of Kyle is defined. It has a name and then it has the abbreviation after that. But there are several abbreviations that I want to make sure all the residents are aware what the word means. So anytime we have an abbreviation in any of our documents, if we could have it as a defined term, I would really appreciate that.
We will do that.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve a consent agenda minded number seven.
All right. It's motion by Councilmember Floriscale, seconded by Councilmember Ellison that we approve agenda item number seven. Is there a discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number eight, authorize award and execution of a purchase order to Burgess and Iple in an amount not to exceed $41,180 for updating the city's water model. Councilmember Floriscale? Or did someone else?
I think that was Councilmember.
Councilmember Parsley, sorry. I got to...
So I have a quick question. How often do we have to update that model?
Quite frankly, Councilmember, we should update that every time we get a new subdivision or new development during utilization or any kind of water improvements. We have both the water model and a wastewater model. So as soon as we get the accepted of acceptance of a subdivision, whether it's got water or wastewater or both, that should be entered in that system immediately so we can keep track of our system and make sure that it's operating the way it should be.
Okay. Because I was reading and it said that you guys will be using, I'm sorry, you guys, it's going to be used, the water consumption averages over the last year. And I know there was discussion about using averages per month in certain meters. So I want to know if we are going to be using the actual average per household when we are doing this update? Or are we going to use the values that we already have?
We try to use the previous values that had occurred through the year. We try to use previous values.
Okay.
We don't make any exceptions. We try to use existing values.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember, if I can jump in and add this, Scott Sellers, City Manager. So we engaged in our first large water and wastewater modeling several years ago, probably 2016 or so, 2016, 2017. It has been our goal to bring the expertise and know-how on staff so that we're not continually paying this money to third parties for modeling. These models will also help us refine our numbers for average water use. So we have been estimating high per earlier, the earlier model, but that was the first model. So we took kind of a regional standard. We know that we're better from a conservation standpoint than other cities. So this model will help us get actual numbers and bring those numbers to in the model. And we do have staff now that are learning how to update the model.
Councilmember, on that study we first did way back when, we had to make a lot of estimates because we didn't know what was going to be developed there. Today, we know whatever's been developed, now we have definite numbers on what's there. Back then, we were making assumptions, four LUEs per acre, whatever it was that we, that's all we could go off. Now we know exactly how many houses are there, what businesses are there. We know that kind of information now based on their meters and the use of water that they have there. So this really refines our models. As we go along every year, we should refine these models so we can get better data out of those models. As you well know, garbage in, garbage out. So that's why we have to keep these models updated.
Okay. I just didn't know if we were going to keep using averages from years prior into this new updated model.
That's the best information that we have. So we have to use that information.
Okay.
And as the years go, as time goes by, we'll try, we'll update those numbers, obviously.
All right. Thank you.
Councilperson Ellison?
Motion to approve the item is written.
Motion by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilwoman Floriscale. Is there a discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 11, approved task order number five to CPNY in an amount not to exceed $54,172.50 to develop preliminary engineering reports for traffic signals or roundabouts at the intersection of Coles Crossing and Marketplace and Coles Crossing and Kyle Crossing. Councilor Floriscale?
Thank you. So I was looking at this area in particular. And I know it says traffic signals or roundabouts. So are we going to do an engineering report for both? Or are we going to do for one and then decide if we need the other?
We've asked a consultant to look at both intersections and to see if it's a possibility that we can put a roundabout there. And if it's determined because of the topography or because of the type of traffic we have there, then we're going to go ahead and switch over to a traffic signal. So then they'll look at the traffic signal and see what it's going to take to put that traffic signal in and the cost it's required to do that.
So is this $54,172.50 just for one?
It's for both intersections. And this is a preliminary engineering report. This is going to give us the direction that we need to move forward if we want to move forward with, do we want to go ahead and move forward with the traffic signals? Do we want to do that now? And based on their traffic studies, they can't really do a traffic study today on Marketplace because the traffic's not there, obviously. So I asked them not to even waste time or money doing that. So they're going to look at the possibility of a roundabout. And if they can justify why we need one or why we don't need one, then we'll look at that report and then we'll move on from there. And the intent is probably to, once we get that determination, then we'll come back to council and say, this is what the report said, this is what we're going to move forward. And if council approves, we'll move forward with whatever their recommendation is.
May I ask how you decided on this place right here for a roundabout?
Marketplace or?
Yes. Well, it looks like, I thought it was in the intersection of Coles Crossing and Marketplace Avenue.
That's correct.
Okay. Because what I see is an Amazon warehouse right up the street?
That's Kyle Crossing.
Yes. Okay. So my fear is the constant, I mean, like, do we really want to pay $54,000 for a report to decide if we want a roundabout in an area where Amazon trucks drive all day?
As per ordinance, we're required to provide a report. So we have to provide a report. And that's why we asked for the consultant, look at the intersection. And quite frankly, you are correct. There's a lot of trucks there. Is a roundabout the best solution there? Personally, I don't think that's a good solution, but we need to do the report as required by the ordinance.
And is that only if we want a roundabout, correct?
That's correct.
So...
Yes. Well, we look at all the major roadways, major intersections. And if it's determined that that's a very good place for roundabout, then that's what we move forward with. If it's determined that that's not really a great place to do that because of topography or whatever other issues that might be there, then we'll move over to the traffic signals.
Okay. I've previously spoken to Councilmember Tobias about creating just like an exclusionary list of areas that we would never put a roundabout. And I think, I guess my holdup is spending $56,000 when I'm not in favor of putting a roundabout in this area at all. Because one of my issues would be large trucks going around this area. I mean, for example, another one would also be like a high walking area or bike area. I wouldn't want that either. But I'm just kind of hesitant to spend that much money when I don't, I guess I'm not sure who wants it there. I don't want it there. And I don't know if the rest of council wants it there.
The issue that's coming up now is we've got all that development coming up. So we needed to do the study sooner than later, especially at Marketplace with PD going in there. We anticipate they're going to be, traffic patterns are going to change there significantly with Marketplace coming in. We know getting built. We know that's going to create a lot of traffic through that intersection. Now, we want to do, we are going to do a traffic study at Kyle Crossing. We want to see what the traffic flow is there. It may not warrant a traffic signal at this time. If nothing else, then do we want to consider installing the foundations for the next phase? And if we've got the foundations in, then it's a matter of installing the poles to install the traffic signals. So we can do it a lot quicker. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at it now.
Well, I'll just, sorry, I'll just say that as someone who drives the Coles Crossing, Kyle Crossing intersection three to five times every single day, it warrants a traffic signal of some kind. So I'm not saying that the study is better either. I'm sorry, you have the floor. I'll just, go ahead.
That's okay. So let me figure this out. Do we have to have a study if we want a stoplight?
Yes.
Okay. So whether we want a stoplight or a roundabout, we have to have the study?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Councilwoman Floriscale, seconded by Councilmember Ellison to approve agenda item number 11. Is there a discussion on that motion?
I would like to make a motion to let people finish their sentence, please.
Noted. Is there a discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 12, approved task order number six to CPNY in an amount not to exceed $56,580 to develop preliminary engineering report to examine the feasibility for the construction of a roundabout on Dacey Lane connecting Downing Way and Fountain Grove Drive. Councilor Tobias?
Okay. I'll be real quick as well. I would figure these things would be flipped because of the amount of traffic that comes down Dacey and the speed that people drive there. Nowhere in here, it states there that there would be a consideration for traffic signals just roundabout. I know we've talked about this before, I, I do appreciate that there is also consideration for proposed illumination on the pedestrian bridge, uh, which is very, very needed. But, we also gotta consider, if you're looking at Fountain Grove Drive, that's the entrance to the manufacturing mobile home, uh, neighborhood. And I've driven down BB before, and those big trucks with the homes on them have a very hard time trying to turn in to get into the neighborhood off of BB. So question one, is a roundabout really suitable for right there at that place? And then also with Dacey and Downing, I know that's the entrance leading out to a major, uh, a pretty big subdivision, Kensington Trails. I know BB and Dacey are gonna eventually have that county stoplight at the top, and I know they say that it's gonna be in twenty twenty-three. So putting a roundabout at that entrance and exit leading out of that neighborhood, with no mention of any kind of stoplights study, I'm just confused, that's all it is.
They will be doing traffic counts in that particular area. The roundabout, if it's proposed, would be at the intersection of Downing Way and Dacey. On the entrance to Fountain Grove, they would do some other different alignments in there to allow the, the houses to be able to move in, so they don't plan on putting a roundabout at Fountain Grove, that's not the intent.
Okay, so with Downey and Dacey, would there be consideration of actually adding, doing a study, see if traffic lights are, is suitable for there as well, because it's not stated here?
That will be part of the study, yes sir.
So it would be both?
I'll make sure it is.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve, item twelve, please.
All right, motion to approve, agenda item number twelve by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Ellison, is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, my concern, um, for this roundabout is the school that is right next to it, do kids walk on that road a lot? I'm looking at the Kensington subdivision, and I see Downing Way and Dacey, and I also see all the way, like, there's ki, I don't know if there's a bus system for this, because I think the rule is two miles. So there's clearly kids walking, and so my fear is, I, I, is this a high pedestrian way for little kids to get to school?
Traffic, uh, roundabouts can be designed to address the, the traffic, pedestrian traffic. The guidelines that we adopted recently tell you how to address those particular issues. From what I understand, the traffic, the sidewalk is on the east side of, uh, Dacey Lane, and, uh, there's really not much development to the south of Downing Way, at this time anyway.
So, so do we know if kids walk on this tr, so, I guess my concern was kinda relieved in number eleven, when we said it's gonna be signals or roundabouts. So is there a, an opportunity to do a, a study on both, to, to make sure we have our options?
We can get, visit with the, the consultant, make sure that they understand that, yes, I can do that.
Okay, I just don't want.
The only thing is that you would be concerned about is trying to put two traffic signals that close, with Fountain Grove and Downing Way, that would be a problem, to put two traffic signals so close to each other.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, next up, uh, agenda item number thirteen, uh, this item has a public hearing, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-three of the zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zone, zoning to approximately five point one eight, uh, five point one-three acres of land from agriculture to warehouse district for property located at thirteen fifty-one Button Creek in Hayes County. Mr. Atkinson.
A little bit of adjustment here, all right. Will Atkinson, senior planner, for the record. Before you, we have item Z dash twenty-one dash zero zero nine three, it's a rec, it's a request to rezone, a little over five acres, um, from agriculture to warehouse, and here's the staff report, okay. As you can see right there on the vicinity map, uh, this is an area between, uh, Dacey Lane and the, essentially what's the eastern edge of a stretch of Button Creek Road, that has developed, um, in the last decade or two, into a warehousing slash, uh, construction manufacturing zoning area. Most of the projects in the middle of that area are warehouse with, to the north, and then construction manufacturing to the south. And on the ends, they're capped with retail services, um, that are a little bit less, um, intense uses, come, adjacent to the residential that's there. And right there, there's a little bit of a picture blowing up on there, so you can see a little bit better. When it comes to industrial uses, uh, we have two major zoning districts, we have the warehouse district, and we have this construction manufacturing district. Uh, the warehouse district is the, is a, is a district that is a little bit more restrictive when it comes to uses than the construction manufacturing, um, so especially when it's in the center part of town, um, it's a little bit more appropriate when it comes to those kind of uses than construction manufacturing is, which has a lot more, uh, well, manufacturing uses. Uh, has more of a focus on, um, limited assembly, limited manufacturing, but mostly on a warehousing side of things. From a comprehensive plan, um, a majority of the site is within the Newtown district, uh, which is in brown right there, a little bit of it is in blue, um, but for the purposes of, uh, this conversation, we, uh, with our analysis, we went primarily with the Newtown district, when we were looking at this. Land use districts, um, when it comes to the comprehensive plan, especially on the borders of them, they can be a little bit fuzzy, so we have to frequently take in the built environment, and how that area is actually functioning when it comes to that, especially on those intersections. Uh, the warehouse zoning district is conditional, uh, per the comp plan, it is not recommended, but it does give us, um, it, it does give us the authority to take a, just a harder look at it and make sure that, you know, we have the, um, that we have all the infrastructure that we need there, we have adequate roads, water, wastewater, uh, and what have you when this comes along. From a permitting standpoint, uh, they'll be, they're going for the zoning right now, they already have their subdivision plat, that was done several decades ago, actually. The next step following zoning will be a site development permit, where we'll make it, make sure they have adequate parking, landscaping, the buildings are in the right place, they have detention and what have you. And on following that, we'll have what's called a conditional use permit, which is where staff will make sure that the renderings of the buildings are approved with the planning and zoning commission, and make sure they are top-notch, we wanna make sure this is a, a, a building and development that shows off the city well. And then, the very last permit will be the building permit, where, um, the architect applies and they, it meets the building code. Do you all have any questions for me? Well, I guess we have a public hearing.
Yeah, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna, uh, the, the public hearing is already open on this item, but I'm gonna ask that if anybody wishes to come forward and speak on it, that they do so now? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Atkinson or comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, Will. So my concern is gonna be how far we are from the school, which is gonna be Lehman High School. So, miles-wise, we're less than a mile, we're point six miles away. And, um, I did briefly get an email from the developer, and they said, you know, we're not gonna have a lot of cars out there, um, they're gonna be limited, but the truth of the matter is, just because they are, it doesn't mean they're not gonna sell to somebody else. And now being zoned warehouse, if another warehouse wants to come out there, they could have high traffic. So, in trying to keep up with the idea that I, I have with our schools and wanting to have nice schools, I mean, there, you'll never find a warehouse district near Johnson, you'll never find one, I don't know if there is one near Hayes. But I don't feel like this is exactly the location that we need to put a warehouse, which is close to not only a high school, but also residential. Even, even if they're only gonna have, I think they said a few cars a day, my fear is, once it's zoned warehouse, it's zoned warehouse, so any warehouse can go in there, is that correct?
Yes, if you approve the zoning district to warehouse, then all the uses associated with the warehouse district are allowed. That does also include the CBD one, the CBD two zoning districts for downtown, the retail services, our, our commercial districts are cumulative for the most part, so, um, it allows uses that you'd see along the highway as well. From a, from a traffic count perspective, again, we don't have TIA's, we don't, built into our code, um, we will assess what their impact is, using the adjacent lane mile fee that's in our subdivision code, um, whenever they are, uh, developing the site. And so that way, uh, we can get a really good estimate of what their impact is gonna be, if the, and then the fees can be in, put either to a fund, to the, um, the road department, or, um, if it's found that the, the fees are high enough, from a mobilization standpoint, they can make improvements to the site as well. From a proximity to Lehman High School, um, I, I'll be honest, I did not take that into account, uh, but given the, um, traditional, like, historical environment along this specific stretch of road, um, between the, the warehouse district, um, in the upper left-hand corner, where it says W right there at eleven fifty-one, and with, uh, Button Creek Road, and then the, uh, Universal Forest project, or products just to the south of this site right here, this, it's, it's hemmed in. The retail services zoning district just southeast of here, um, that was a, a doggy daycare, I believe, at one point, uh, childcare center was trying to go in there as well. It is not gonna be staff's recommendation that it goes any further southeast down Button Creek Road, it is obviously transitioning into a more retail-focused, um, development, it was some, um, little bit, uh, lower density residential right there in the middle of the block, um, but as you get closer to Lehman High School, it does not need to have warehouses right next to it. So this is the, this is the furthest southeast that I'm, if, if people come in and ask, hey, can we add more and more, if these people got it, we're pretty much gonna tell them, no, this is the, the furthest east they can go. That's gonna be our recommendation, anyway.
Councilmember Ellison.
Motion to approve, the agenda item is written.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Mayor Protim Rizzo, is there further discussion on the, the motion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. All right, uh, next up, agenda item number fourteen, approve a resolution of the city council authorizing and creating the Savannah Ranch Public Improvement District in accordance with chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code, Providing for Related Matters, and an effective date, this item does have a public hearing, Ms. Science.
Mayor Council, page signed, city attorney for the record, we've got a public hearing that was started in the prior session as well, so you can take up the public hearing at this time regarding action on this item, I'm gonna recommend that you delay action on this item and take it up with items nineteen through twenty-three, because they're all related.
Okay, uh, this item has a public hearing, if there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will hold off on the action, we'll bring it back up with the other items. All right, next up, agenda item number fifteen, consider, no, fourteen, no, fifteen. Consider and possible action to authorize an amendment to the contract with Brightview Landscape Services Incorporated, uh, doing business as WLE, to add four additional scopes of work in the amount not to exceed four hundred thirty thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars seventy-eight cents for providing landscape tree planting and irrigation services to the city's beautification corridors. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor Council, Jerry Hendricks, Assistant City Manager, for the record, what you have before you is an amendment to our existing contract with WLE to add four beautification projects to their scope of work, if you'll bear with me just a moment, I will share my screen. Wrong screen. I'll just provide a quick, uh, thirty thousand foot guide of what we're doing. As you know, WLE and Brightview have been doing our beautification work throughout the city for about a year and a half now, doing a great job. As part of the beautification plan, we identified these four projects at the onset, and we feel we're ready to get started with them now, so just running through them with you, there are four projects being proposed as part of this amendment, one is adding trees to the, uh, western part of sixteen twenty-six, west of, of, uh, thirty-five, um, doing landscaping and irrigation on the Burleson Street Roundabout, uh, irrigation on Kyle Parkway east of thirty-five by the hospital, and that whole stretch, and adding, uh, trees and irrigation to areas along Marketplace. As you see in the diagram before you, and this is in your backup, where, uh, WLE is proposing adding trees, and there will be irrigation with this too, there'll be a total of thirty native and drought-resistant trees, nine of them will be cedar elms, four will be live oaks, three will be Mexican sycamores, fourteen will be grape myrtles.
Grape myrtles.
Whoops, type of, the, uh, that includes irrigation, tree staking, which, uh, make sure the trees stay in place as they get established, soil amendments, and a mulchering around them. The total cost for this, the landscaping and irrigation will be, uh, in round numbers, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-ish dollars, and there's an alternate for boring for sleeves for the irrigation if, uh, that turns out to be needed, and that's, uh, right at twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, the project total, and assuming that we have to do the boring for the irrigation sleeves is, uh, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Yeah, the next project is, uh, Burleson Market Street Roundabout, that's irrigation and landscaping, you see a rendering of what the proposed landscaping would look like once it gets mature. That includes, uh, demoing the existing soil, they'll remove the top twelve inches of that, replace it with, uh, fresh soil and soil amendments, they'll power wash the existing logo off the, the, the apron of the roundabout, because it's fading, and they'll replace it with one that's more, more durable, and then, um, the installation of the irrigation and installation of landscape, total cost for that's right at forty-five thousand dollars. The next project would be Kyle Parkway irrigation, you see, uh, a map with that irrigation plan laid out in front of you, that also includes the, not only the irrigation installation, but the, uh, boring sleeves, if those are needed as well. The cost for the irrigation system is, uh, just under eighty-eight thousand dollars, if they have to bore for sleeves, uh, to alternate, will add an additional eighty-eight thousand dollars to that, for a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Just wanna point out that when we first built this street, irrigation landscaping was included, but it was, um, it was not done properly, and it's degraded since then, this project, once the irrigation is installed, we'll bring another, uh, amendment to you to actually do the landscaping. Finally, the Marketplace Trees and Irrigation, this will be planning in three different phases, a total of a hundred and two sixty-five gallon shade trees along Marketplace, will again have the tree staking, the soil amendments and the mulchering around all those trees, as well as the irrigation installation, the total cost for that is just over a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The total cost for the change order is four hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, uh, funding is available in this year's CIP budget, line item is provided in the backup, and on the slide, I have Blair Howe with WLE Brightview, uh, with us virtually, and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jerry, any questions or comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, I love WLE, they're awesome.
We do too.
Can I ask you, can we go back to the Kyle Parkway? Okay, can you tell me what I'm looking at?
Yes, you were looking at, yeah, you're looking at the irrigation diagram.
Okay, what stores in the area? Can, can you tell me what stores are over here, and what area of Kyle Parkway this is?
It's from I thirty-five to Dacey Lane, so in front of Walmart, Lowe's, all the way back to in front of the hospital, to the intersection.
Thank you, so, without knowing that, I wasn't really sure how much was gonna get done on the east side, and I know.
It's all on the east side.
Is it all on the east side?
It's all on the east side.
Okay. Yeah, I was super excited, all right. That was the only one that I really, I wasn't aware of where the location was, and so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Agenda item fourteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty? No, I'm just joking, I would just like, yeah, fifteen, please.
All right, it's been motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Ellison, that we approve, agenda item number fifteen, is there discussion on that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, Jerry, uh, we're talking about the trees, how have we discussed on what kind of trees we're using as far as the root system? Are these root systems gonna be something that are gonna, you know, create something with the sidewalks, or the, uh, roadways, or is, are we okay with these trees?
Let Blair answer that question.
Yeah, you, we did take that into consideration, most, uh, all of these trees are gonna, root systems. Most, uh, all of these trees are going to, root system is going to go straight down in the ground and branch out lower. They're not real far spreading root systems, uh, which is why we chose them. They're also fairly drought tolerant and treesy you'll find, uh, in just about every neighborhood throughout the city.
Okay, I appreciate that. That was the only concern I had, so thank you.
Wait, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Isn't Burleson on the west side?
What was the question?
Burleson, the roundabout? Okay, just wanted to, because everybody said everything was on the east side. Oh, no, okay, gotcha, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I'd actually like to comment on the east-west thing because it's an important paradigm shift that I went under through thinking about sixteen twenty-six. So I at least want to explain that in my mind, sixteen twenty-six is the spine, the, the commercial spine of the city. And it's a north-south street. And its southernmost tip is at the Dacey intersection. That's where you, the, the, our commercial corridor terminates all the way from sixteen twenty-six into Austin. So the idea is to make sure that sixteen twenty-six as a corridor, uh, is, uh, presents itself in the, the manner that we wish to see our commercial development along that corridor. So, uh, there's, there's two particular parts of this that, um, I have a, I have a fair amount of emotion wrapped up in. And it's the landscaping on the roundabout, uh, and it's the irrigation on the east side. Because both of those projects were scoped, paid for by the city and installed. And they all went, um, uh, went, went back to greenfield, as they say, o- over a period of time. And so that's a standard that I've, do, do not want to see us ever think is acceptable. And so this vote is important to me because it rectifies and, and, uh, two of those issues. The Burleson Roundabout getting landscaping and irrigation as well as the irrigation on, because, uh, apparently it used to be very, very beautiful in front of the Walmart and in front of the hospital. You can see the remnants of old great landscaping, uh, and it all went away because the city stopped maintaining it. And so I want to make sure that as we rectify these situations with this vote, and Mr. Hendricks spoke to it, but that it's just made really clear from a council standpoint that we should stick behind this with maintenance contracts so that into perpetuity, um, we're able to, we're able to keep this level of beauty, uh, in the city. So it, as far as I can tell, this is, it's, it's fixing steps from the past, but it's also a, um, you know, an opportunity to set a, set a new mark. So something I'm very exciting about. One thought about the east-west conversation is that the east side, because the, the irrigation was all, uh, went, went away or deteriorated beyond repair, the, basically half of this budget goes to just the irrigation on the, the east side, which doesn't actually plant new things. And so the scope of this was brought forward two years ago, I believe, when our initial WLE contract. Has it been two years now?
Just about.
About two years. So they, they, they actually scoped and bid all this back then. We didn't budget it, but then we did budget it in, in this year's. So it's, so it is all, uh, a part of our, uh, budget. But, uh, I believe we have some kind of wiggle room there if we want to authorize these projects to potentially add a, uh, a tree and landscaping component on the, we'll call it the hospital side. Uh, I don't know exactly how much I think we might have without having to go back out to bid and having Brightview and WLE just incorporate it. So I think we've got probably about a hundred thousand dollars worth of wiggle room. So if we wanted to give direction to have that, we can approve this and have them say, hey, we want to take a look at the actual landscaping on the east side as well. We can have them bring that back. And within certain parameters of law, we'd be able to, probably be able to accomplish that as well. That's what I want to do. I want to make the, I want to add about a hundred thousand to this and get the landscaping done on the east side as well. But it just wasn't, it wasn't scoped initially, so it can't be presented because this is all just ready to go.
Amendment to the motion.
Well, I, we can, or they can just know that, that, you know, we're interested in receiving that proposal back.
I'd like to see an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Um, so I would like to amend my motion to include adding an extra hundred thousand dollars for actual, um, trees and.
Well.
Landscape.
Landscape.
Not, don't, don't make the motion on the number. Make the motion to bring back a proposal.
To bring back, okay.
Because we don't know exactly what it's going to be.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a proposal to, uh, amendment to bring, for to have staff bring back a proposal for landscaping, around the Kyle Parkway, um, in addition to the irrigation installation.
Is that amenable to the second? Alright, so we'll take a motion on the amendment first. Uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, so this, this vote will be to approve this contract and then to bring back a potential change order to add landscaping. And I think Jerry's fully aware of what, what we're proposing.
Thank you, Council.
Alright, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you, Council.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion carries, seven to zero. Alright, next up, agenda item number sixteen. Consider and possible action to approve a proposal from Barnes-Gromatsky Kosterek Architects, also known as BGK, in an amount not to exceed six hundred and three thousand dollars for a fifteen thousand, uh, square foot, uh, building for design services at the city's one oh four South Burleson Capital Improvement Projects. Uh, this has got Todd Kaiser, I don't know if he's virtual or Scott's presenting. Oh, there's Todd. Todd, you want to kick it off?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, good to be here. Thank you for having us. Also on this call with me, I have Tommy Kosterek, uh, from the BGK office.
Good evening.
And I will share my screen. So today, uh, Tommy and I come to share with you guys some slides, um, about the Burleson Building. And this is across the street from Mary Kyle Hartson Park. And Tommy and I have begun to coin this as the catalyst building. Because we see great opportunity here, uh, to complement all of the great work you've done at the park with a physical building, uh, and really center downtown and create a new heart for the downtown area. And so we'll share with you some imagery and an animation. But, uh, before we do that, we'd like to talk a little bit about our process. So we always begin a project, uh, as important as this one, by really looking, uh, at the community and working with the community. So part of our process will be to engage with the public, uh, engage with the people of Kyle and engage with the, um, the staff, the city staff, and all of those people in and around the city. So we know there's plans for a trail system. We know there are certain desires and goals of the community. We plan to tie all of that together into our project. And just a little bit of context, this is a slide that's shared quite often, um, in, in towns or cities that are really trying to do something special. And these are really the goals of our project. These are things that we can achieve through architecture and good design. And ultimately, they center around four key areas. And those are sociability, uh, having the right uses and activities that a city might need, uh, creating comfort and image and health. And then also connectivity. Again, I referenced the trail system, which is going to be a fantastic addition to the city at some point. This building will be part of that, uh, and connect to that and strengthen it. So it's about connectivity, uh, building community, diversity, inclusivity, health, uh, creating a mixed use project, quality of architecture and design, and ultimately opportunity for Kyle. Again, we can't stress, uh, how important this opportunity is, uh, for the downtown area. We're so excited to, to help you guys achieve that. So this is a catalyst project. And what, what we mean by that really is that this project, in addition to the park, working with the park, will cause a corresponding and complementary development reaction around this area. So it's a project of significant sufficient magnitude that's going to strengthen and build the Kyle community and also improve the financial and economic health of the downtown area. As everyone knows, uh, there's so much happening in Kyle. It's fantastic. We love to hear all of these new projects in these meetings and all of, all of the activity and development. This is an opportunity to really focus on the heart of Kyle, where, where the history began, right in downtown in collaboration with the park to catalyze this area in a really great, healthy way. I mentioned Mary Kyle Hartson Park. It's the heart of downtown. This building and the spaces around the building are going to heighten that project and play, uh, in unison with it. And this project will offer enjoyment, learning, some dining restaurant opportunities, and then also a, a place and space to build community. Um, I loved hearing the, uh, the teacher from, uh, from the school talking about the One Community One book and needing a place to have this event. And she talked about indoor and outdoor space. This is that opportunity. This can become such a key part of, of Kyle and plug into the schools and plug into community groups and really serve as, um, a civic or community building that we'll all be proud of. So those are a lot of warm and fuzzy words. What does that really mean at the end of the day? Well, we're going to create this project all about Kyle. And it starts with public engagement, right? Tommy and I are not going to go design in a vacuum. We're going to design this with the city, with closely with council, closely with public engagement. We're going to design it around the city, um, something that you guys can take pride in, that we're all going to be proud of. Potentially two, maybe three restaurants could be at the ground level. And we're thinking about local restaurants, something in around Kyle, something that started around this area. Again, I mentioned the students. We see an opportunity to tie into Hays ISD, have some kind of an engagement piece with the students, whether it's art or just gathering ideas or having events for students in the future. So part of this project, we envision an event space where you might lease it out or rent it out for community or, or public events. Uh, and then bringing in low, local artists somehow, some way. Again, we're just in the beginning of this thing. This is just a proposal, it's just a concept. But we're going to find ways to plug in pieces and parts of the people of Kyle to make this something that brings everyone together. Uh, I mentioned the dining options. Right now, there's some options downtown, um, but quite frankly, some people go outside of downtown if they'd like to go and have a nice dinner. Well, we see this building as a real opportunity to bring people from maybe the outlined communities to downtown. They can go and visit the park, have dinner, uh, bring their family or a couple or whatever, and, and they can come downtown. This sort of brings people back, uh, to the heart of downtown. Uh, we'll provide a large indoor space for events and then also some outdoor spaces. So we've got Mary Kyle Hartson Park across the street. Part of our design will be a large, um, outdoor space behind the project where we imagine maybe some playscapes for children, uh, maybe some pieces of art, um, furniture, maybe some, uh, space for outdoor music. Family friendly and a big goal would be to connect to Kyle's, uh, rich history, but also embrace the future. So these are a few historical images. Uh, we know the Bon-Ton was a big deal in Kyle and, uh, you know, it's, it's an important piece of fabric. But, you know, the train depot is, is also key. I mean, that's the reason that Kyle really is where it is. Um, and I show these images because what they mean to us is this was where your history began, right? People gravitated and they lived and they worked and they socialized downtown. And so we think this is the opportunity to bring this spirit back, um, to create a place, a special place, uh, for events, for restaurants, for families, um, and really bring people to, to sort of revitalize downtown in a really healthy way. So that's the past and this is the present. So we're also taking cues from what's around us, right? There's, uh, some great old historic buildings, um, there's some new development. Part of what we're doing is understanding all of that, um, simultaneously and, and making sure that we're aware of those things and taking cues from those things, those, those buildings and those designs and incorporating those into whatever we come up with. And perhaps, um, one of, one of the most important aspects of, of, of our project is what's across the street. And it's the old city hall and it's the new park, which we all know and love. So the Burleson Building is, is directly across the street from the old city hall. And so as we start designing this, um, we're, we're very, very, um, sensitive to, uh, what's happening at the park. And we're going to make sure that everything we do really works hand in hand, uh, to celebrate the city hall and tie into it and have people flow freely from the park to the Burleson Building and vice versa. So it's creating a strong connection to the sort of the history in the building and the future in the park.
So your downtown core, uh, Kyle, just to orient everyone, obviously the park is right there in the center where the cursor is. Right across the street to the left is our Burleson site. And all the red buildings are, convey your significant historic buildings now. The darker red are perhaps future, future buildings, you know, at some point, you know, as Kyle continues to grow with this, uh, fantastic growth you guys are experiencing. Then zooming in on the park and the site a bit, next slide, right there. So that's, that's where we're going to have our focus here tonight, the Burleson Building. And kind of, again, to go, go back to what Todd said earlier a little bit about our process. This was kind of the initial kind of, uh, seed or whatever that, that got planted in, in our minds and what was, has been presented to some of the city staff and city folks and such. But again, the dark, uh, red is the footprint of the Burleson Building. To the right is the old city hall Todd mentioned. And the significance of this is, we feel, is that the things it's, it's, it's setting up for, it's setting up for future kind of development in downtown. It's establishing a strong street edge to Burleson. You know, the face, it gives a real strong presence to the street and, uh, a very respectful gesture to the city hall across the street with regards to that axial relationship. And, uh, what that sort of orangey, uh, color is, uh, showing or delineating is a, the ground plane, which would either be, you know, concrete pavers, come, uh, colored stained concrete or a combination of both. But it's the idea to physically and symbolically connect the, uh, city, old city hall with the new Burleson Building. And to the left is that area that, that Todd was speaking to, how this, this sort of open space to the left is, you can imagine all kinds of events and activities happening there. We know that, that what's shown there right now in the sketch are, uh, was an idea from Ann Coleman, who obviously did the park across the way. And Ann is actually going to be our landscape architect on this project as well, should it, should we be successful, uh, in, in being awarded the project. But this is conveying some pop-up, you know, events for farm, you know, uh, farmers markets, arts and crafts, so forth. And having the infrastructure there in place to have, be able to put up string lights, be able to have electricity out there to have all kinds of multipurpose events. To the south, Kyle Creamery, the old DA Young Building. We see those as tremendous assets. And if there's a way to somehow bring those into the fold somehow, and we're going to show you a little bit about that shortly. And then the site itself, you know, we're not, not telling you guys anything you don't know. This is such an incredible opportunity, this site right across the park. Our back is, behind us directly is the old city hall. And, uh, it's just so much opportunity to, to really, um, make a, make kind of a statement here in terms of quality, uh, presence, identity and so forth. So if this is before, and after might be something like this. This was initial, just an initial concept sketch, you know, it's, like we said, we, we sort of did this in a vacuum at the time. We would most definitely, and our preference is to work side by side with our clients in collaboration. But just the basic idea is that this, this portal, this is an open air portal that you see here in this particular sketch. And that's right on axis with the old city hall. So you can really see how there is a physical connection through there. And, uh, just really ties and connects the old with the new and the future. Next. And then the, the two buildings to the south, Creamery, DA Young. You know, we see this as, these as tremendous opportunities. If, if there is a way to somehow bring these into the fold of, of some sort of development and refinement of these buildings to, uh, you know, uh, further their use and usefulness and everything because they're, they're incredibly beautiful, so.
This goes back to the idea about, you know, taking something that's sort of historic, but using it in a really special way. So we would never really suggest demolishing those two buildings. I mean, they're historic and beautiful, but could they be cleaned up, uh, made safe, um, and really celebrated? And so part of our, our new building, which would be where these trees are, we see an opportunity to really maybe reuse these two buildings as special galleries or some type of retail or, but then also to plug in, um, to our project with some kind of a special. of retail or, but then also to plug in, um, to our project with some kind of a special in-between space for either hanging out or a restaurant, cafe, outdoor seating zone, playscape for children or all of the above.
All about inviting the, the entire Kyle community, you know, a place, a welcoming place.
And so, uh, now we'll share with you guys just a, a brief animation if we have just a minute left. Um, and I don't know how well this will play. But, uh, again, this is really just a first pass at a, a concept. Uh, we're certainly not suggesting that this is really exactly what it looks like or, you know, it, it's just sort of showing the scale and then some of the key ideas. So, uh, just want to be sure that we're not suggesting that this is a cooked design by any stretch, but this is just really about illustrating some of the goals of the project. So the old city hall is on the left and the Burleson Building is on the right. And so now we're headed south on Burleson. Uh, again, we imagine restaurants at the ground floor. Even an idea where maybe there's some large openings that could roll up and really blur the line between outdoor and indoor. Maybe for events or special, special occasions, we even see the potential for outdoor dining in this zone, uh, this restaurant could open up. And now we're kind of going down this, through this patio. And back into this rear plaza. So this would be another space where we see a lot of opportunities to have different types of programs, whether it's, um, you know, formal events or just, uh, again, a playscape or a place to have coffee or, um, a place for musicians to play music maybe on the weekends. And now we're headed down towards the back of Kyle Creamery in the old DA Young Building, kind of seeing that space, uh, in between those two. And again, just an idea for a cafe, but utilize those beautiful assets that you already have as part of this project. And by you, I mean the city. I know these are not necessarily, uh, Kyle Creamery is not owned by the city, but I just mean finding a way to celebrate them through partnerships or agreements. So, so that's, that's about all we have to show, um, but I think, um, the idea is, is we're extremely excited at this opportunity. Um, there's so much potential here and we're, we're grateful to even have this opportunity. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Todd. Does anybody have any questions for the presenter? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you for your presentation today. Um, you know, as we move forward as a city and we're growing in different areas, it's great to see us not forgetting about our, uh, downtown. And for me, this has always been downtown Kyle. And I'm, I'm, I've always been interested in re-energizing this part of the city. I think this is a great step forward in, in doing that. I love the, uh, early concept and look forward to, uh, working with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Forrest Cale.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for, um, the presenter, but I just want to make sure that everybody is on board with this because I feel like we've been talking about this location for a really long time. Um, and I love the idea of fixing it up. I just don't want to, um, spend money if we're not really sure on what we want to do.
Councilor Ellison.
I concur with that statement, um, wholeheartedly, and I think that's what this vote tonight is probably going to do. So I make a motion to approve the agenda item as written.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Forrest Cale, that we approve agenda item number 16. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, agenda item number 17, considering possible action on a development agreement binding between the City of Kyle and CSW, uh, a limited liability company for the Kyle Marketplace subdivision.
Mayor, Council, what you have in your backup material is version five, which shows red lines, uh, with all the negotiation. Uh, really the difference between the, uh, several versions really come down to the vibe trail. Uh, we have brought forward this development, uh, several times in the past. As you know, the council considered a 380 agreement for this property, both north and south tracks, uh, with retail and vertical mixed-use development, uh, on each. The, uh, the DA puts these, uh, negotiations into print as well as defines whose responsibility it is to construct different portions of the trail. Uh, the developer is going to be responsible for all trail, all vibe construction, uh, on the south tract from, uh, Physicians Way and then crossing the road, there will be what's called a hawk signal, uh, which is basically a pedestrian activated push button signal for safely crossing Marketplace Avenue. That will get, uh, the pedestrians to the north tract. Uh, as the development occurs, the, uh, phase one will be the retail portions of the development. Uh, so all of the restaurant pad sites. The, uh, phase two will then be the construction of the vibe, which the developer will construct within, uh, 48 months, uh, no later than, uh, but also in concurrence with the first two, uh, vertical mixed-use buildings that face the Kyle Parkway as well as the, uh, southern, uh, planned south, I should say, so the two eastern buildings that face Marketplace. Uh, we did have considerable discussion about crossing the railroad track. I think that's the, the, the big unknown and we've recently discussed that even with Schaumburg and Polk, uh, as they have looked at the engineering, uh, it seems that the aerial power lines, uh, are too low in this area to construct a bridge over the railroad. Uh, in conversation with, uh, different groups, uh, it appears that maybe the most feasible option is to, to go underground. So we have shifted the, the, uh, development agreement to reflect a tunnel option rather than an aerial bridge option. We believe we have a, a pretty good cost estimate that actually could be, uh, cheaper, more affordable than the bridge option, uh, but we'll still need to run those traps and coordinate with Union Pacific Railroad and get those permits. But the city would lead that portion of the project, uh, through, uh, through this DA. Developer would get the, the vibe trail up to that tunnel, uh, crossing. So with that said, everything is codified, uh, before you and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Councilor Forrest Cale.
Thank you. Um, when I looked in this backup material, it wasn't there. Can you tell me when this was, when this was added?
Which version? This, the latest version, version five?
Um, whatever version I need to vote on.
Version five was probably added at 7:15 PM tonight. Version three was added to the packet days ago. So again, the draft between three and five just clarifies the, uh, the timing and the ownership of the tunnel in particular, uh, and then the timing of the construction of the vibe as per COs for the units. But version three, which has most of their pertinent information was, was included prior. I'll just say that this has been a very lengthy negotiation, uh, between the city and, and CSW. Uh, of course, we've, we've brought this back to council multiple times, uh, in draft format, but the final draft, uh, was negotiated up until this evening.
Is there, is there any way we can get some time to like read it?
Yes, ma'am. The, so the, the red line in that version five does show the, some of the differences between maybe a former draft that you would be more familiar with. I also do recognize that this did come very late, uh, this final version. And while there's been a lot of negotiation, a lot of, uh, effort to get it ready to go by tonight, if the council's not ready, uh, we understand that. Uh, so the council would like to postpone this to March 22nd. That's, that's our priority.
I, I would just like to get the opportunity to read. I don't know if it's...
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I may ask the, the applicant also to come up and, and share a little bit about the project while you peruse that, so.
Hi. Good to see everybody. Uh, Scott is correct. This, this document has been in conversation for a very long time. Uh, exciting things have been implemented into this document. Uh, we are proud of the partnership that has been formed through these conversations. And majority of it, yes, um, version three was, was what you were looking at. It was put on us to obviously coordinate getting the vibe integrated into this document appropriately, uh, which we're thrilled to do. We love the connectivity it, it gives our project, uh, for the city, for the neighborhood, uh, across the way into Plum Creek. So really, you know, the difference that came down to version three and what you're seeing today is responsibility and responsibility of constructing the tunnel, uh, responsibility of sections of the vibe being built appropriately, um, responsibility of the hawk signal, again, getting integrated. Beyond that, you know, this project has been, uh, on my mind a lot. And, uh, I've seen you all quite a few times and, and again, enjoyed the collaboration that's gotten us to this point. Uh, one of the things I do want to touch on, if I could, on the project itself, um, because of this vibe, because of the connection into the, the neighborhood, um, we've been able to attract a whole big open list of sit-down restaurants and, uh, users that through our conversations with you all, the city, uh, also going through, I've seen surveys from the city, a lot of the users that I'm happy to visit with you on, on an individual basis and will be able to speak about publicly, uh, very, very shortly. They, without even knowing what was on that survey, we've, we've hit, I would say, six to seven of those users. And that's come from a lot of input that came from, from the city. Uh, original development did not have a courtyard. The original development did obviously clearly didn't have the vibe running through it and we're happy to work with you all on that because we love what it does. It gets us plugged into the city. It attracts those users, those sit-down restaurants that we're thrilled to have here and they wouldn't be here without, without that, without these conversations. So I, if you'd like me to answer any more questions right now, I'm happy to. If you want to hear Scott, I get it, he's better than me.
Well, I, I might add, we, we did make one other change to the $3 million incentive that's part of this project. So originally, the, the $3 million, uh, was intended for the bridge, if the council recalls that. And then, uh, you know, anything beyond that $3 million would, would go back to the developer. In this version, the entire $3 million goes into the project. So if the, the tunnel now were to cost $2 million, uh, and then the hawk signal is roughly 150, 200,000, just depending on, on the engineering, uh, the remainder goes back into the project through some sort of, uh, enhancement or betterment. That could be art, could be, uh, a television screen on the central square. I think, uh, downtown Carmel, for example. Uh, so a lot of opportunities. However, same thing applies that if the engineering and the construction costs are beyond the $3 million, then the city would be on the hook to, to pick up that overage. We, we will do everything that we can to, uh, to keep those costs as low as possible.
So I guess my only question is, I'm looking at the version five, there doesn't, either there's very little red line and I'm not seeing it, or this is just not a red line. So I don't know where the changes were.
I can explain. When I upload a Word document, it automatically approves all the changes to convert it into a PDF into your full packet. So I can send out the red line version now.
Where, I mean, was there, was it a tremendous amount of redlining? I guess, I guess.
I just sent it to you in response to your email. Um, it should go to council as a whole. The, um, redlining is around the tunnel, pedestrian tunnel provisions, because we were addressing how we would go through funding of that as well as the description of the vibe. That's where the majority of the redlining is.
And, and what kind of redlining changes was that? It was just trying to, you're saying with, it was like giving responsibility? Okay.
I can explain. So I, again, I tried to hit the high points, but in general, when it was a bridge project, uh, and even initially when we looked at, uh, the feasibility or the infeasibility of, of a bridge and more feasibility in the tunnel, uh, the project was really in the hands of the developer to oversee, to commence and oversee. The city ended up assuming that portion of the project because there'd be a lot of permitting, uh, and, uh, you know, engineering that are associated with this that, uh, are more appropriately overseen by the city.
You're not seeing?
Councilor Ellison.
Certainly, uh, I'm just trying to respect, uh, any member, of course, but, uh, if Councilmember Forrest Cale wanted to make a motion for postponement, otherwise I was going to jump in with a postponement to approve the agenda item as written. So I'll just go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. Second. Motion by Councilor Ellison, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Rizzo. Is there discussion on that motion?
Could you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
The motion is to approve.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Six to one. All right, next up, agenda item number 18. This is second reading and ordinance emitting chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 8.32 acres of land from retail services to mixed use, uh, MXD for property located at Kyle Marketplace, section two, lot A, and 19.48 acres of land from retail services to mixed use for property located at Kyle Marketplace, section two, block F. Uh, this is second reading. Mr. Atkinson.
Will Atkinson for the record, senior planner. Uh, this is, uh, the second read, uh, petition number Z21-0089. This had a fall after the last item that y'all just voted on because it's the zoning related to this project and by state law, you have to vote on it as, as a separate issue. So, um, again, staff fully supports the MXD zoning district, uh, rezoning request and this, it's just the second component of the previous item. So if you have any questions for me?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Rizzo. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Six to one. All right, next up, we have items 14 and then 19 through 23. Before I bring anyone up, does, do you want to make a suggestion on which ones to bring up and what the recommendation's going to be on the items?
I'm going to give you an overview of the recommendation and then open it up for your, the items 14, 19 through 23 are related to the Savannah Ranch project. This item has many moving parts that we've been working on delivering with as many approvals happening at the same time, um, at one council meeting. We are almost there, but not, not quite. And so what we would look to council for action on tonight would be first reading of the TERS ordinance, if council is comfortable with doing that. Uh, that would put us in a position of having second reading occur in connection with the remaining action items, which would be annexation, PID creation, development agreement approval, uh, PID dissolution agreement, inter-local agreement with the county being approved. Uh, you are also poised to have zoning occur on the 22nd, first reading, um, and that could be final depending on council's action that night. So that is the recommendation. What we have for you this evening is we have the developer present who can provide you with some information about the project. Um, we also have your PID TERS consultant, P3, that would describe the financing structure for you so that you, uh, have that information, you can ask any questions. And if there's anything you're, have questions or concerns about that we aren't addressing tonight, we'd be prepared to bring that back to you. prepared to bring that back to you.
So you're, what you're saying is the idea is for us to have everything ready for action at the exact same time. So if we're doing one item, we're doing all, and if we're doing none, we're doing?
Correct.
None. But because of first and second reading of the TERS ordinance, you're requesting that we pass the first reading so that we can have all items considered at the same time?
That is the request, if that's, if council's comfortable doing that.
And the item you're requesting us to vote on is item 22?
Correct.
Okay. The developer agreement was, is not in the backup yet, is it?
No. The developer agreement gets very much simplified if we have the approvals, approvals done. And so we, we've had a good back and forth between developer and city team, and we've identified the, the points that need to be finalized on that document. So it is not in the backup because it is still being finalized.
Okay. Well, for myself, I, I have no problem putting the TERS to a vote and taking it to second reading so that we can consider everything in front of us. Does anybody else have thoughts on that?
I do have a question about the TERS.
Okay. Why don't I, actually, why don't I bring up 22? I'll actually bring the item up and then we'll ask it from there. So we're going to bring up agenda item number 22, first reading, ordinance of the City of Kyle, designating a contiguous geographic area within the City of Kyle as reinvestment zone number three for the purposes of tax increment financing and creating a board of directors. Councilor Floris Carroll?
Well, my first concern is, there was no map in there. Did we end up getting a map?
The, the map, there's a project plan. So the, the TERS ordinance, if I will jump into that here, the, the TERS ordinance creates the tax increment reinvestment zone number three around this proposed project. The Savannah Ranch project is about 200 acres. And the, there is a project plan that's attached to it. It's a preliminary project plan. There's a map that's included within that preliminary project plan. I can point you to which exhibit it is. If you'll give me a moment. Exhibit A is the map of the zone.
Bless you.
Also a presentation. I'm not sure if that will include the map.
And if you would like, I'm, I will defer to your, answer your questions, and then we can open it up for a presentation if that's helpful as well.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to be completely honest. I met with this developer, and I, I love the idea. This is something that I have been trying to ask to be in Kyle for a really, really, really long time. My concern is more with the TERS being 30 years. And so my question is going to be, how much, how much of that tax is going to be held there? And then how much will go to the general fund and for how long?
I'm going to start this answer, and then I'm going to turn it over to the PID TERS consultants. We have, I'm, Casey.
Rick Rosenberg.
Well, Casey's, Casey's here, and John Snyder's on, on the line as well.
She looked at you.
I looked at you, so you're up next. So the way that this is structured is that, as you're aware, you're familiar with PIDs, where the PID pays for the internal infrastructure. This project is currently located outside of the city limits. It's subject to an interim development agreement, an annexation agreement, that provides for the residential development to stay outside of the city limits until any PID bonds are paid off. This is a very large, this is a small piece of a very large tract of land, 2,100 acres, 800 has been taken down by one developer. This is a 200 acre component of the remainder. Again, that development agreement provides that anything that is a residential component of that project stays in the ETJ until PID bonds are paid off. So what this, what the developer's proposing to do with this project is to annex that property right away. That's why you see the annexation procedures have been followed. Part of the action, if council approves this project, would be annexation of that property. So you'd have annexation right away. What the PID does and what the TERS does is, they pay down the, the tax increment that when you annex into the city, you're going to be subject to a city tax. So the purpose of the, the TERS is to pay down a portion of that PID assessment, so that the PID assessment that is on the property owners is, is an equivalent of 395.
295.
295. Sorry, that would be too high. 295. And so that, that is how that, that is the purpose of the PID and the TERS. So what the PID and the TERS are paying for, the public infrastructure that's being paid for, are all the internal improvements. The developer is then going to be obligated to construct certain off-site improvements as part of their obligations under this project. The, the tax increment that the city is contributing to that is 37 point, 36.74 percent is the city's portion of that tax increment. I believe that's 18 cents equivalent. The county has, has entered and, has agreed and approved a form of an interlocal agreement where the county would agree to participate in the same amount, 36.74 percent.
So 36.74 percent will stay in that area for the next 30 years?
It's, it depends on, so that's going to be something that we need to pin down in the documents because the, the TERS has to last long enough to pay down the PID bonds. And so it will depend on how long the PID bonds are outstanding.
So, okay. So if it's going to be 30, it has to be even 30 and 30. It couldn't be 30 and 20, like 30 for the PID and 20 for the TERS?
No, they have to, they have to be the same. The PID bonds and the TERS have to equal. And this is where I think I need to turn it over to the consultant. Sorry.
Well, I actually have a question to follow up on to what she's asking. So our PID policy requires a 20-year amortization.
It's a 20-year amortization period.
So they will be requesting to extend that, that, you know, we're, we're authorizing the creation of the TERS in this item, but it is a relevant question about amortization of the, the indebtedness, because right now they're allowed 20 years.
Correct.
In which case it would make sense for the TERS itself to be 20 years as opposed to 30. So if, if the applicant is going to make a request for extending of the PID bonds to 30 years, and therefore the matching TERS would, would do that, we would probably want to make that action at the same time as we take into account all the other things.
If they're going to request an exception from the PID policy, they'll need to request it. The other thing is, if they are going to issue series of bonds, instead of one, one set of bonds at, at one time, if they're, they're going to issue a series of bonds, which my understanding is there are currently proposed three bond issuances, then that would factor into the length of the TERS. The, the PID bonds wouldn't be necessarily issued day one, but, and so you take that into account as well.
Well, so in the backup, section four, duration of time, it doesn't, it's not filled in in the backup material?
No, it is not.
Okay, so what, so if we vote on it now, there's still, at what point are we making, are we making the decision on the term of the TERS on the first reading of this item? Or does that term, is that something that we can discuss it?
You would discuss it and have it set at second reading.
Okay.
And that is an item that the county is aware of as well, county attorney is aware of, that, that they have a blank in their interlocal agreement as well for the term of the TERS.
Yeah. Well, I, I have questions and interest on that as well, making sure that, that those things marry up. I just, we're not at a place yet where we can have the, the full context of the discussion because the other items aren't ready. Just the formation of the TERS, first reading is this one, and then on the 22nd would be where we could make those discussions and, and have that.
And if necessary, we could postpone the one for the 22nd if it's, I mean, I hate
We can postpone all of it on the 22nd, yes. This gets, this just lines it up so
to do that.
that on the 22nd, if we choose, we can take final action.
Okay.
And let me turn you over to the consultant, so you have a better source of information on this.
Thank you. This is a TERS question?
Hi, I'm Mayor and Council, Casey Sclara with P3 Works, the city's PID TERS consultant. Yeah, so in that preliminary project finance plan, which you have, exhibit E kind of outlines a whole bunch of numbers, but the main ones are the ones which were highlighted there with those percentages of the TERS contributions from both the city and the county. And then just to kind of circle back to the overall structure that's being utilized, so currently the properties within the district right now have a current tax rate of 252. And as mentioned, we're kind of getting the, the total equivalent tax rate up to 295, which as currently contemplated would involve a 75 cent PID and a total TERS credit buydown of about 32 cents. And we work backwards from there to, based off of the, the products that's being developed in the district to get those numbers, that 36.7 percent, which is being contributed by the city and the county.
Okay. We have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So to, to simplify this, if I had a dollar, and I knew that it was going to go to a TERS, you're telling me that 18 cents of that dollar is going to go to the TERS, correct?
So the, the total between the city and the county is?
Well, just for the city, yeah. For the city, because the county's going to contribute their own. But I'm going, I'm, my concern is making sure we get some money back in the general fund, because this will be an area where there's expensive houses. And so I am nervous to keep all that money in that same area for 30 years. So going back to the question, a, as a city, if we have a dollar, 18 cents is going to go to the TERS and the rest will go to the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's the number.
And, and, sorry, this is, this is John Snyder with P3. I think it's, it's actually, in that example, it would be the 36.7 percent. So it'd be 36.7 cents would go to the TERS and the remainder would go to the, to the general fund.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, and just to clarify, just to piggyback on what Paige said, the current agreement that they have with the city is for zero. So it's not from a dollar down to 60 something cents, it's from zero up to 60 something percent of what our general fund would get. So the, that's what the TERS does, is it allows for us to go from zero cents of tax revenue to approximately 35 cents or, or 40 cents, or whatever that total number is. So that's just, that is the crux of the, of the deal, is on the basis of whether or not that's true. So is, if they go under, if they pursue the project under their current entitlements that they already have from 2015 with the city, they will develop a residential, the continuing develops, will be developed residentially out of the city, in which case the general fund receives no tax value. The TERS achieves annexation, and while it doesn't achieve 100% of funds to the general fund, it does get the majority of them there, so.
And can I also state it gets 150 to go through?
It gets 150, there's funds for it. And again, I want to see the, that's why I'm more excited about the 22nd meeting, because I care a lot about the details of this. And we just, there's still more to, there's still more to come, so. Any other questions, comments, motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I'm struggling.
22, 22.
Second?
All right, motion by Mayor Protim Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Floris Carroll. We approve agenda item 22. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to one. This item will come back for second reading on the 22nd. We're going to skip all the rest of them. We, we closed the public hearing on item 14? I think I did. Pretty sure I did. All right, next up, agenda item number 24, considering possible action on a resolution approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum of, for City of Kyle, special assessment revenue bond, Series 2022. Mr. Miller?
Hey. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers Gregory Miller with Bickerstaff, Pete Doggito Acosta, and we are the city's bond council. And just to refresh your memories, we're here talking about the Plum Creek North Development, which is located around Coler's Crossing and 1626. The North Development Project consists of about 386 acres and is going to bring about 1,200 homes to the City of Kyle. If I could lump 24 and 25 together, because these are essentially two sides of the same, same item.
All right, if there's no objection, I'm going to bring up 25, considering possible action on a resolution approving the form and authorizing the distribution of preliminary limited offering memorandums for Series 22 Revenue Bonds, Public Area Improvement District Number One. So both items are up.
Okay, great, thank you. And also to further refresh your recollection, the purpose of these bonds is to fund public improvements within the area just described. The improvement area number one, which consists of about 129 acres, and it will bring about 400 homes to the city, that will be in the amount of approximately $6,400,000 in bonds to fund various improvements such as water, wastewater, drainage, streets, and park facilities, and erosion control. And with regards to the major improvement area, that's going to be about a 266 acre plot of land just to the north of improvement area number one. That's going to bring about 813 homes to the city, and that bond is in the amount of about $2,700,000. And that's going to be used to fund water, wastewater, detention, and erosion control. So that's the purpose of the bonds, is to fund these public improvements in that area. So about the actual plums or preliminary limited offering memorandums that you're approving tonight, these, for lack of a better term, are the marketing documents that are going to be issued when the city goes out to sell these bonds. So these are going to be issued, I think, sometime next week. And folks that buy bonds will be reviewing these and, and kind of kicking the tires on the project to see if they want to invest in it. These documents will market the projects, market the bonds, and then we'll be back here on the 22nd to let you know about pricing on the bonds, and, and hopefully to ask for your approval for the, for these two series of bonds. Just for your information, these preliminary offering documents do three things. They describe the project to investors, they describe the state of the city's finances, and then they let the investors know that the city is obligated to provide annual reporting information about your finances. And this is consistent with the other bonds and reporting that y'all do. So like I said, these go out to the market, investors look at them, consider if they want to buy the bonds. There's a pricing with FMS bonds on the 22nd. They're the city's underwriter, they'll be heading that up. And then we come back to you on the 22nd to see if you want to approve the sale of the bonds.
And these are 20-year bonds?
I believe, is that correct? Yes, that's correct. Yeah, there's not an exception to these.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilor Floris Carroll?
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, because I don't quite understand this process. And I know we've had a really, really great gentleman come in here before and try to, to help us. But so are these bonds that the city is going to be held liable? Like, like if they don't get paid, the city's on the hook?
And I remember you asked that question last time, you really liked this answer.
I know. I just can't wrap my head around it. I'm trying to figure it out. But so then in that case, the answer is no.
Correct. What sets these apart is these are special assessment revenue as opposed to ad valorem tax. So these are backed solely by assessments levied against the property. So I, I don't like to talk about default, but let's say there is a default on the bonds. The only recourse that the holders would have would be against the property, not against the city's full faith and credit.
So then why does the city bond for it?
These are public improvements, and the idea is that it's in the city's interest to, to have these constructed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda items 24 and 25.
Second?
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protim Rizzo. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, agenda item number 26, considering possible action on a maintenance and operations agreement by and between the City of Kyle, Texas and Sage Hollow Residential Community. Ms. Amber Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager, for the record. I am going to ask that the council not take action on this item tonight. It will be brought back at a later date with the completion agreement, but the city does not own the property at this time, so we'll bring it back to you.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to go to item number 27, considering possible action on a letter agreement by and between the City of Kyle, Texas and Kyle 57.
This letter agreement memorializes the undergrounding of the electric and telecommunications infrastructure in Kyle 57. The work will be completed in three years. And in exchange for this, the council is waiving the PID fee and allowing them to prairie build, where they start construction prior to acceptance of the roads.
Is that what, that's what Brooks Crossing did?
I, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that's always strange to me to see the slabs getting poured before the roads to them are complete, but.
Does that make you nervous?
I get nervous about all kinds of things, yeah, so.
Is that, can, can you explain why, why we're doing that?
Um, the developer would like to get the homes on, built, built more quickly, um,
The, the COs can't be issued, you can't have any occupancy at all in the homes until the roads are completed and dedicated, so, correct, yeah, so.
Yes, yes.
It's just a strange development practice, but I understand. Mayor Protim?
So what assurances do we have that they'll make the roads to the whiffs that they're sa- they've got into plans and the drainage as well, if we're allowing them to build the homes first?
They have two um access points that are, um, one is the off-site wastewater line easement, and then one is off of a construction drive, so they're gonna just build these homes here first with the, and then, then they'll do that concurrently as they're building the roads, and then once the roads are built, then they'll use those to build the rest of the development.
And will they build them to the standards that are outlined in the contract? Because we've, we've had an entity come into the city and uh not followed the guidelines of the road whiffs.
Yes, yes, we will, um, and I believe we inspect for that as well, so.
Yeah, we, we missed it on one, so definitely.
Which one did we miss?
Uh, the, uh, there was a whistle over at, uh,
Paramount?
Yeah, Paramount.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that one, and we've, we've caught it, so we're, we're making the developer go back and correct it.
Sounds good. I just wanna make sure they're building everything to standard.
Mayor, uh, Councilman Tobias?
That just seems like the total reverse, where these houses are just being built, and then the street, okay, let's build the street while we're building the, the houses, and see if it works the way we want.
And.
And you'd never know what kind of, when you build that house, you don't know what kind of landscape that you have there, whether you've got a, a creek, or you've got an area that could flood, and then next thing you know, we're stuck, and then we're having houses like we had in Bunty Creek, where whenever it rains, it floods and it just covers over everybody's yard, and it's, and it's having to go back and re-engineer it and spend more time, and they, this just doesn't make sense.
Certainly, and, and that's a decision up to y'all, um, I think if the develop, the developer's here, if he went, if you would like to speak to him, but, um, if, you know, y'all would not have to approve the prairie building if you didn't want to.
We'll make a case for it, we will at least he- hear it, so I, I know there's a real reason for it.
Yes, sir. Um, Mayor and Council, thank y'all very much, my name's Daniel McElrath, I'm with uh Milestone Community Builders, we're the developers of the project. So we prairie build in virtually all of our communities throughout central Texas and um are, are very um cognizant of the risks that it can impose if it's not done properly. Um, so our processes, we go in and we rough grade the entire site, so we get it to um, to the grade that it needs to be for the home building team to come in and start pouring their slabs, um, and the roads are intentionally designed to stay off of the future public right-ofways, so that we don't do damage to the roads that we're gonna dedicate to the city in the future. And the last step in the process of constructing the homes is always coming in and doing the landscaping, so we'll make sure that fine grading on the lots is done after these access roads are out of there, um, and all the traffic is, is operated on the, the paved roadways, so that um we can finish the lots and we can turn them over for citic, for uh closings to the, the homeowners, um, with a, you know, a finished, finished home and a landscaped yard that drains and flows correctly, um, per the grading plans that are approved by the city. One of the reasons that we do this is to be able to shorten the overall construction timeline and the impact on our neighbors, um, as we're going through the development, the land development and the home construction, um, and then it also, like in the case of this, um, this project with us having a pit on it, it helps us change, uh, improve the value to lean on the pit as we're able to turn homes over more quickly, um, and, and have a higher assessment value on the, the property within the district for the pit.
Tell me, uh, Daniel, what, what, the, the prairie building construction, what kind of time savings does that realistically give you, and if it isn't granted, what kind of delays are you looking at?
I mean, so with this plan here, what it would allow us to do is have um homes that are ready to be turned over to the residents and closed to the residents when the con- um, the subdivision improvements are accepted, and they can have the certificate of occupancy, you know, generally, that's gonna be a, a six to eight-month timeline, depending on supply chain issues, which can be, you know, sizable right now.
So the, the current rule is that you cannot begin the lot preparation until the roads are dedicated, is that, is that?
The, I would have to defer to what James or Amber, if you recall what the current code is, um, I believe it's when the, the improvements are accepted, is when you can begin construction of the homes, when the roads.
Correct, the subdivision improvements need to be accepted. Okay, well, one, one thought is for this, you know, when you're, when you're building all those lots, uh, you're bringing in lots of trucks, and so if you've finally finished a road, then you're immediately putting heavy traffic on it while you're, you know, so there is some savings to the road, if you have assurances that the road will be completed, you can, you can potentially make the road, you know, last a little longer by doing it this way, but I, I just need to know for myself, and I think Councilman Tobias as well, that, that there's just, there's no way for this to create additional risks or opportunities for, you know, any corners to be cut. I'm gonna defer to Leon, this is a practice that we've done in several places, so.
And the agreement does put a lot on the owner's risk and uh expense in prairie building construction under section two of the letter of agreement as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Leon Barber, City Engineer. We did try this experiment at one time on Meadows at Kyle, and um, I don't know if Harper is here, if he remembers, but we did try it. The issue that we had was with the tracking, uh, eventually they started raining quite a bit, and they started getting on the roads that they hadn't finished yet, so that was a problem on that particular subdivision. Understand what their goal is and trying to start the houses before they, uh, finish the roads, but things happen, and that's the only thing I would be concerned about is what happens if the, um, houses are ready to get COs, what happens if the roads are not ready yet? At that point, we will get pressured to uh try to accept a subdivision as soon as possible, I will get, um, emails and letters and questions saying, why can't we accept it, when can I get it on the council's agenda for acceptance? So that puts a pressure on public works and staff to try to, to expedite things, which we, we always try to do that, to help the developer and the contractors, but the dilemma here is that what if something goes wrong? Because it's a great idea, I'm not saying it's not a great idea.
Didn't we do that with the MG Cardinal? Because they built the extension where La Verde, they, they, they didn't dedicate that over to us until months after they had started there, they already had the vertical halfway up before that road was even open to the public. And then Brooks did it as well. I don't recall with MG Cardinal, uh, because that Well, I, I'm just telling you that they, they were building long before that road was dedicated. So maybe it's because they have the front to a different road or something like that, although this Probably because they had a construction entrance in the rear, with MG Cardinal they did. Right. But what's the difference, is what I'm saying? Well, the question for Daniel, are these, is this for just the models, or is this for, for going vertical on phase one?
When there's eighteen, um,
Eighteen, okay, well, that, that answers my question. So Mayor, what we've done in several instances is we've kind of split the baby, uh, where, you know, the goal for them is to, to obviously get up and start selling houses, uh, but at minimum, they'd like the model homes to be built, and they can start using them as sales offices, so those typically don't contribute to our wastewater system, don't need the utilities, and don't put the burden on, on the roadway, so that's something that it could be a middle ground where we could allow a couple of model homes to be built.
Actually, uh, City Manager, Mayor, the uh code does allow you to build model homes, and it clearly says that you can do it when you haven't even paved the roads, it will allow you to drive on the base, I'm not a fan of that, but that's what the code says, if you build a model home, but you have to meet certain provisions, you have to have uh four parking spaces and other things that go along with that, so there's a provision that the code allows you to build model homes before the road is even paved.
Correct. So
They just don't get a CO.
In your, in your opinion, is it, is it better for the long-term health of the roads to follow this model, or is it better to go ahead and say, let's get the bu- roads built first before we're doing lot work?
I appreciate the fact that a lot of the heavy truck traffic, as you mentioned, would be using this other road rather than the, uh, bases, the, the roads, the new roads that are paved, because if we can get as many trucks off that, not using that, that would be best, so I totally agree with that idea. The only dilemma I have, again, is things happen, and then if this, um, if they're ready to build those, move into those houses and the road's not finished, then that's when it creates problems for all of us. But the other issue we had with Moses at Kyle was tracking, the, uh, it just kept raining and they kept tracking out on the roads, and we had to stop them on that one.
But, but per ordinance, e- even if they were putting pressure on you, you cannot issue a CO until the road is dedicated, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right, so, all right, uh, other questions or comments?
Uh, I, I guess, just for me, I just see the final product at the very end, I mean, I'm not trying to, um, bring down what, how this plan works, or if it's in the ordinance, but it, it comes down to when the house is finally built, and you have somebody, they advise it, and then they sell it, and then we have problems with flooding, we have problems with just easement issues, and these people who have bought these homes, uh, I've already dealt with three residents already through, and on my term, they, they have it to where they have the flooding, or the, the fences falling down, and, and just no roads, and the roads are, some, the roads are smaller, some are wider, and the way they curve, and so it's just, you know, I'm looking at the final end result for the resident themselves, to when they finally buy their home, ten years, oh, five years down the road, and they're like, and they realize that they're, they're having these issues, and also the fact that, where you're saying there, that it gets the house built quickly, uh, I, I hate for us to be looking at, or, or developers looking at building homes too fast, so that way the quality is not up to par, uh, in that end, and so I, I'm looking at it from, from the consumer part, as, as the, the home buyer, and making sure they have a good quality home, making sure the streets are, are usable versus, and like I said, it's just hard for me to wrap around that concept, but that's all, thank you.
If I may speak to that.
Sure.
Thank you. So Councilmember Tobias, these um roads, what are shown in the kind of dark brown areas with the turnarounds, those are the prairie build, construction access roads, those are temporary roads, those will be coming out, and the, the um grade on all those lots will be back, brought back up to the grade as it is defined in the subdivision construction plans, and it's all designed to reduce the um, the, the rainfall flows onto the neighboring properties and be fed back into um the, the ponds that we have on the site, um, and then those, you know, lots will be finished with landscaping and fencing and trees, you know, with all the landscape improvements. In terms of um the quality of the construction of the homes, it's not really the timeline to build the home that changes, it's gonna take eight months to build the home, um, regardless, it's a matter of when we're able to start that construction. So by being able to start construction on the eighteen homes that, um, that we can access without putting any additional pressure onto the streets, the, the future right-ofways, and without doing any damage to those future right-ofways, that's, you know, the eighteen more homes that we're not gonna have to try and build after all the subdivision improvements are accepted, and that's, you know, another eight months or so that we're not, you know, putting construction traffic and construction stress on the neighbors and on the streets that everybody else in the community is using.
Councilman Floris Kell?
Thank you. So, um, when these eighteen houses get built, are there, are there, there gonna be roads for anyone to access those homes?
They, yes, because the, the homes will not be sold, they will not be closed to the final home buyer until all of the infrastructure improvements have been made and a circum- certificate of occupancy has been granted by the city, which is gonna require acceptance of the streets, acceptance of the water, wastewater, drainage, all the, the parks improvements, all those items are gonna have to be constructed prior to us being able to get certificate of, of occupancy, and for any of the residents to be able to, you know, be in the homes and drive on those streets.
Okay, so you guys, the, the, the normal way it goes, it's, is streets are built and then the house is built, but you guys are doing the house and then the streets, I guess?
We're doing them in, in tandem, basically, so we'd have the home builders out of the way of the uh general contractor for the subdivision infrastructure improvements, so the general contractor for the infrastructure improvements will be building the roads, placing the base, putting asphalt down, and the home builders will be on these roads, out of their way, um, accessing the lots from the back.
Okay, so ta- tandem meeting together, what makes me nervous about that is that's gonna cause a lot of traffic, not for residents, but just for the builders and the people laying the, the streets. How do you, how do you guys propose that you're gonna regulate that kind of traffic and, and, because it's not just regular high traffic, like cars zooming by, it's gonna be big trucks and construction going on at the same time?
Uh, the, the, the trucks will be on the site in different sections, uh, paving, laying base in different sections at a time, you know, we'll, we'll try and uh coordinate that schedule so that there's not a, a lot of um crisscrossing or interference with one another, um, and then, you know, if there's additional traffic, um, regulating measures and cleaning the streets on the pub- public right-ofways, we'll ensure that there's a safe site and a safe roadway for um, for the residents outside of the development, and then obviously for the contractors within the development.
Okay, so on this map, would you mind just kind of telling us what, what's gonna go first, and how that construction is gonna look alongside the roads?
So there'll be um, an asphalt truck that will, or sorry, a concrete truck that will come in, and after we've formed up the pads on the homes, they'll come in and they'll use the turnaround to then go and pump the um, concrete for the pads of the homes, then a delivery truck will come and, you know, drop uh wood for framing, drop all the materials, you know, we'll still have parking on site for, off of the access road, um, right now, most of the construction workers are parking behind um, the pump station there, um, off of one fifty, and so there'll still be uh places to park, and there'll be, um, but the, the traffic on the access roads will be delivery trucks for materials that will come in, in batches and drop the materials on the lots for then, um, the individual builders to come in and, and work um on the homes, and they're gonna be in their, you know, trucks and cars.
So which area are you gonna work on first? So I'm seeing one, two, three, like some areas, I, I need to wrap my head around how this construction is gonna work.
The, the green areas, the green dots, um, with the lots, with the, the brown prairie building road.
Along one fifty?
There's, so there's, yes, a few along one fifty, and then a few there, um, in the bottom right corner of the page, so that's where, those are the only homes that will be having prairie building on them. The rest of the homes in the red and the blue dots, the construction on those will not start until after the subdivision improvements have been accepted, that means all the utilities are accepted, all the roads are accepted, all the, you know, the infrastructure improvements have been completed and accepted by the city.
And so are you gonna sell, are you gonna sell those homes before you, you guys finish the inside? No, okay, so you, you could build them, but you're not gonna sell until all this is complete?
They'll be, they will be pre-sold, um, we can close on them once all the infrastructure improvements are in place to the, the final buyer and the, and the homeowner, um, but we will, ownership will not transfer to the homeowner until all of the subdivision improvements are in place, just like any new um subdivision, there will still continue to be development and construction of the homes throughout, you know, the course of the project, but all the, all the infrastructure will be in place, so after those first eighteen homes, the process looks like it does in any other subdivision, um, where you're, you know, we're building uh lots, building homes on lots, um, kind of in a phase-by-phase basis.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna assume you just need to build those for monetary reasons? Okay, and I'm, I'm going to assume you just need to build those for monetary reasons?
It's, it's part of how our company largely operates. It's, it's trying to shorten the, the cash cycle. It is trying to minimize the impact, the construction, the, the time that there is construction traffic on the neighbors and on the other roads in the, in the community outside of the development. And it's also a, a means of us, you know, getting a lower, higher value to lean on the PID sooner so that there's, you know, a, a higher underlying value of the, the land that the PID bonds are on.
All right. Can I ask Leon a question, please? Thank you. Leon, what is the worst-case scenario in this situation?
I don't know what those temporary roads are going to be built of, but with the weather we have, we start raining, and then I can just imagine the trucks and the workers, and we'll start using the, the roads to get in there to get their work done. That's the worst case that I see. And that's what happened to us at Meadows at Kyle. The weather just interfered with the road that they were trying to use.
And are they trying to get building, like ASAP right away? Because it's about to be rain season. I mean, if you're...
Again, I don't know what they're building the roads of, so if it, you know, if it was a nice paved road, that'd be something else, but they're not going to be paved roads. They're probably going to be base or something like that. And, and even base will deteriorate with several rains, so you, and you start tracking out into the streets and stuff like that. But then again, some of the workers are going to be trying to use the existing roads that are being built, worked on too, so. And we don't have inspectors there watching everything to make sure that they're not doing that. That's the dilemma that we have. We don't have enough inspection to, to watch that carefully. So that's the worst that would happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It sounds like maybe we should have a vote on the Prairie Building Construction, and then we'll have a vote on the master agreement, if we want to do it that way, or if somebody wants to make a motion, one way or another.
I just have one more question for the developer. You've got a lot of rollers, rollers going out there right now. What's the timeline on those to stop operating?
What have they done with their compaction?
Yeah.
I would have to discuss that with the project manager.
If you could email me or counsel that as well, so that way we have that timeline. I'd like to know what's timeline, when that, the rollers will stop running.
Yes, sir. I'll try to get, get an idea of that.
All right. Well, I don't have an issue with it, so if I make a motion, it's going to be to approve the whole item. Does somebody want to make a motion on the Prairie Build? All right, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Twenty Seven.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on that motion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Twenty Eight. Consider impossible action on, on design ad services totaling eighty-two thousand one hundred seventy dollars for the city's Public Safety Center project to be funded from the Design Allowance Fund build into PGAL's existing contract with the City of Kyle, and to authorize the city manager to act on all future design ad service requests for the project not to exceed the design contract total agreed upon with the prime design consultant, PGIL. Chris Rubish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on the project itself. Bartley Cock reported two weeks ago at a council meeting that steel erection was about to start, and today, two stories worth of steel on about a quarter of the building are up. So that's pretty exciting. The Agenda Item does a pretty good job of recapping what we're after approval for, but the item is to approve eight line item design team ad service fees incurred over the course of the project's development, some from all six of the consulting firms involved in the project. And as the Agenda Item says, the fee can be covered by dollars already in our contract, so we're not needing or seeking a change to our contract. Just a blessing to use some unused money from allowance and reimbursable fees that we haven't needed to use to cover fees related to design changes over the course of the project.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Sellers, is there anything you want to add on that?
These are all council-initiated changes.
All right. Mayor Protam.
So I wanted to see that where the savings were. I know that we had some of the items that we, the change orders we did actually would have saved us on some of the development for not designing in certain areas. Did we take those into account as well when we were doing this?
I'm not quite following the question. I mean, these are all related just to design time, not construction savings, if that makes sense. Right.
So just design is what you're...
Just design, right. If you're asking about what we saved on in the design world.
Yeah.
We had built into the initial contract allowances to do cost estimates, a cost for survey, and with the survey provided by the developer, and with the hiring of Bartley Cock as construction manager at risk, they did the cost estimating, so we didn't need to, to pay for a separate cost estimator. So those were the savings inside the design contract.
Thank you.
Council, I may also say that while AGCM is not here, they have had a chance to look over, and they've, they've authorized these per their...
Well, that's, that's sort of the question, is what's the difference between this and the action that we took at the last meeting, which authorized the city manager?
The, the action the council took last was, was only for Bartley Cock or construction-related items, but did not bring forward design-related items from PGAL. So this item would apply to then both, as long as it stayed under the ad alter network contingency amount.
Okay. Councilor Ellis.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Mayor Protam Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number Twenty Eight. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you. So can I ask you, on the first paragraph, it says, "PGAL prepared multiple design options and iterations, which were presented and reviewed with the city staff/leadership." Could you please share with us who on DIAS viewed that?
It was committee staff. We had weekly committee meetings between police and cities, I think it was the committee.
The task force.
Yeah, task force. I think Dex was on there. Councilmember Rizzo was on there. Rick Koch was on there. Those were the council members, and then Scott, and then the police staff themselves.
Yeah, these changes are, would you say, eight to twelve months old, each of these?
Yes, yes, yes. It was really, the design changes were really post-bond election and just changes to the design aesthetic, roof forms, brick detail, things like that.
I, I don't remember seeing these as any, I, I would like, before I vote on it, to spend fifty-three thousand dollars. I, I would like to see what it looks like. My concern is, when I made a motion prior to, to keep the plans the same, one of the feedbacks I got back was there was, it was going to cost more money. And so it looks like now we're spending quite a bit of money for changes that I'm not, I...
These wouldn't be changes that you wouldn't recognize aesthetically. I assume you've seen the latest renderings of, it was the evolution between the design development renderings that were pre-bond and the design evolutions post-bond, so.
What columns, brick?
Yes, right.
Certain, certain other things.
And also does include the change to the dispatch, so that is a more...
That's recent, yes. So eight to twelve months ago, I was here. And so the fact that I don't, I don't know what, what the change looks like, for me, is concerning.
So, so the picture of the final product of the PD, of the outside, is what the change was. It's the aesthetics, it's the brick, it's the design, everything outside of the building. And there was a task force approved by council on a vote, and task force worked on these designs as a body, and we brought back the final product, the outside of the building, to all of council.
Correct. And now I am voting for a fifty-three thousand dollar change, so I'd like to see what that change is. It looks like there was custom structural steel design and drying effort. I don't know what that means. My, my, the bottom line is, if, if people want me to vote for this, I, I need to know what that change was. I, I'm not sure if that's fair to me to just say, yeah, that was great, you should have done that, because I don't know what it is.
All just restate was, between the renderings and the design concept of the bond, pre-bond, and then post-bond, a lot more detail was put into the exterior design in the size of the entry tower, the amount of detail, and therefore some structural work to account for that in the facade, a change to the roof form, going from a straight to a curved form, which required, you know, effort by us as architects and the structural engineer.
And to, to be clear, these are already designs that are fully under construction and built, materials ordered, and this wasn't something that we could fix with the, with the AGCM amendments that were made. So it's, the question is, are we going to pay PGAL for the services that they rendered before or not?
That's right.
I guess I, I wouldn't understand why we would not pay, like...
It's, I mean, it's that simple. I know there's questions about your involvement on that.
For me, I feel like it should have been approved, and then it should have been done.
You know, that is a tricky one. I've, in the, you always look back at the timeline, the, the effort to get the project drawn, priced, under construction, and, you know, being team players and just plowing through versus bogging down with waiting for approvals in some ways. And some, some ways, that's not great business by us, but it was in the sake of teamwork and, and getting it done.
Yeah, because if you're telling me this was eight to twelve months ago, I just feel like that's a long time to hold off on getting paid. So in the future, I would like to see us approving it, and then you guys moving forward with getting paid. Okay, thank you.
I agree with that.
Mayor, motion approved, Agenda Item Twenty Eight.
I think we already have it. Yeah. Just ready, is there any other discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Thirty, discussion of possible action, or discussion possible direction regarding minutes for all City of Kyle boards, commissions, and city council. Ms. Hall.
Jennifer Holmes, City Secretary, for the record. And I wanted to bring this item back forward to see if anyone had any feedback. After the council meeting on the fifteenth, Mayor Mitchell also asked me if I could provide action-only minutes where all the discussions on motions were stripped. And so I provided that in the packet, as well as links to the video. So for the next group of items, approval of the minutes for that specific meeting, the regular minutes for February fifteenth, please specify whether you would like to adopt the video minutes or the action-only minutes, or if you want me to go back and do full minutes and bring those back to the next meeting. I just wanted to get everyone's feedback from the backup.
Has anybody gotten a chance to look at the difference on the regular meeting? It's, it's still ten pages is the, is the point, even the action-only, because there's a lot of cutting and pasting of the Agenda Items, but then there, there's still some tedium there. But my thought has been that at a minimum, the action-only item should be something that we present as opposed to a, a video feed, because there's just a lot to be gained from that. But we need to give Jennifer the direction. Do we want her to keep the minutes the way they've always been? Do we want to go with an action-item-only version, which is what's in the backup, or do we want to go with the link to the video feed as the direction? So we need to give that feedback to her now. Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you. I do prefer the action-item-only. But even with that said, I know we, I know Jennifer stated that we tried to outsource it, and it was kind of a mess, but if we're just outsourcing the action-only, do you think that would be worth looking into?
I would say that even in this meeting right now, the action-only minutes are probably ninety-five percent done. And so it does not take nearly, you know, it's just a matter of making sure I got the right mover and the right secondary, that kind of thing, but I'm doing that lifetime, so.
Okay, so, so if we just do action-only, it, it's not going to be nearly as time-consuming. I like the idea of it. I think it takes away any kind of, I mean, people can watch the video, but then it's, it's straight facts. And so I, I like the action-only. But I, but I do want the written, and I'm sorry. I just feel like if somebody wants to go back and look at it, or if technology changes and we lose our videos, it's important that we be able to back that up somehow.
And they're, they're printed and signed as well. Once we take this vote on the minutes, they get printed on fancy paper, and we sign them, and they get filed, so there's an extra layer there in addition to the online record, which I also like, so. I think I'm hearing action-only, so that's at least halfway to what, what I know was helpful, so.
And all the other minutes, I provided full minutes for this time, just not knowing which way y'all would want to go.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to, do you, do you want direction on it? You want us to take an official vote to give you that direction? Are you good on bringing, okay, so the direction's going to be action-only item, minutes from, from here on out, so. All right, next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor.
Councilor Tobias.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes for thirty-one, February twelfth, February thirteenth, the workshop. Also, item number thirty-three, which would be the meetings minutes for February fifteenth. Also, for number thirty-four, meeting minutes, video minutes for February fifteenth as well. And number thirty-five, me, a special meeting minutes for February the twenty-second.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protam Rizzo, that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Good job.
Nice job.